Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order.
So, welcome tonight. And, Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Okay. Thank you. And now, could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President Fox.
Here.
Okay. And now, I’d like to call on the students from the Black Student Union at Summit High School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Did I forget something?
No.
No, no, I’m asking them if they’d like to lead us. So, you just need to get us started, okay? Yep, just get us started and we’ll all join in with you, okay? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You can go back to your seats and I’ll call you up for your presentation in a moment. Sorry, I sprung this on you and I didn’t give you a warning. I apologize. But, we’re really glad you’re here tonight, so thank you for coming. Okay, so, we need next the notices regarding closed session and hearing some comments, please, Madam Clerk.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length, unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion on the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of February 1st?
So moved.
Ooh, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we’re on to reports. Madam Mayor, would you like to give your report, please?
Please. Thank you very much, Council President. Just a few things. First, following the community meeting on Broad Street West Redevelopment Project on February 9th, incorrect information has been shared publicly by a few residents that I would like to correct here. The redevelopers chosen by the city is a joint venture between L&amp;M and Toll Brothers. Any other plans presented during the proposal process by other developers are not part of the current redevelopment plan. Furthermore, the total number of residential units proposed in Sub District 3 is 140, with no more than 200 housing units built during the entire project, including Sub Districts 1 and 2. I encourage residents to visit the City of Summit website to learn more about the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project and to view the correct plan for Sub District 3 When deciding whether to support the project or not, it is essential that opinions are based on a review of the actual site concepts and the financial benefit to the city that will be presented this evening by City Administrator Michael Rogers. The Summit Police Department’s Trading Card Program has returned for 2022. Originally launched in 2004, the program is designed to foster communication and trust between members of the police department and young Summit residents. This will be the fourth installment of the program that is generously funded by the Summit PAL. Now, through the end of May, children can collect a trading card from each sworn and civilian member of the Summit Police Department. Each week, several featured cards will be available at the Police Department Records Bureau window at City Hall until 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Children may also ask officers for a card when they meet them in the community. Information on the prize and guidelines for participation are available at cityofsummit.org/polic. And lastly, stay in a loop with NIXLE alerts from the Summit Police Department. Get notified of street closures and other timely updates by texting 07901 to 888-777. Visit nixle.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, moving on to the City Administrator, Michael Rogers, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. My report section will be more like a commentary this evening, so, good evening, everyone. Since the Sub District 3 letter of intent is on the council agenda this evening, I’d like to take this opportunity to provide my thoughts on why the city pursued redevelopment on Broad Street West, and to share information that will hopefully provide the public with more insight on the importance of the project for taxpayers. When I was hired in September 2015, the governing body had a strong desire to pursue potential redevelopment opportunities within our city. In 2016, it was quite apparent after the city went through extensive public engagement and many discussions with volunteer committees during its master plan reexamination process, that Summit citizens and elected officials saw the Broad Street area east and west of Village Green as areas of interest. They saw a need to reimagine the landscape and create legal mechanisms for private entities to make significant capital investment on properties that could clearly be better utilized, especially on the properties that were city-owned. While municipality has local control for what it adopts as its zoning laws and desired land uses, there are limitations on design preferences, housing unit makeup, and other project details that are not within municipal control if the project conforms with city zoning code. Redevelopment law, however, allows municipalities to have far greater control over the land use, proposed project development through redevelopment plans and agreements on such terms as building design, materials, density, affordable housing requirements, open space and public improvements, and financial terms for land acquisition and annual payments based on project revenue realized. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey provides very few statutory options for municipalities like Summit to provide economic development incentives within its boundaries. Moreover, the state of New Jersey has tight control over how municipalities can generate revenue to support its budget to fund essential service provisions to its citizens. New Jersey municipalities, except for Newark and Jersey City, which have a sales tax provision, can only raise revenue by one form of taxation, a tax levy on property assessed valuation. And a municipality can only raise revenue through its municipal tax rate as a percentage of what the municipality’s tax levy need is in any given year. In 2021, municipal government received about 19 cents per $1 raised in total property tax revenue. Fortunately, the state’s local redevelopment housing law provides a municipality another option to generate more revenue on private property improvements than otherwise would be permissible under the ordinary property tax regime that currently exists in the state. Please allow me to lay out some important points to consider when thinking about redevelopment and whether it is needed in Summit. In 2010, the city’s total net assessed valuation, which is, and I’ll refer to as NAV, which comprises of all land and improvements evaluations, was $3.12 billion. This valuation stayed basically the same up until 2018, when it reached $3.13 billion. Last year, it finally surpassed the $3.2 billion mark. In 2021, the residential portion of the city’s total NAV was approximately 82%. 10 years ago, the residential percentage was around 80%. Why is this relevant and what happened? Even though the residential tax base grew by over $160 million since 2010, there was a sizable industrial valuation decrease on the form of Merck/Cellgene and now BMS West Campus property. Nearly $100 million was lost in valuation from 2013 to 2019 due to a tax appeal settlement. The bottom line is Summit’s residential property owner has borne more tax burden over the last decade because of this industrial valuation decrease. Good news is, the city expects to see increased valuation on the BMS property in the coming years as a result of extensive building renovation and planned construction work that is currently going on. Finally, just for apartments, because since the Broad Street West Sub District 3, apartments property valuation only grew by just approximately $22 million over the last 10 years. Municipal budget revenue. In 2016, the city’s tax base generated approximately 52.7% of municipal budget revenue through its tax levy. In 2021, it’s 53.4%. Point is, the city budget is more reliant on property tax revenue to balance its budget. And who is bearing the greatest burden to fund this increase? Residential property owners. Just some other budget facts. Local revenue has remained stagnant over the last 10 years, other than the $795,000 that the city began to anticipate in its budget since 2018. That was due to the city’s settlement with Overlook Medical Center and its tax-exempt status. The total settlement amount was $5.56 million to be distributed to the city from 2017 to 2023. That $795,000 amount will end in 2023, and will be replaced by approximately $500,000 anticipated revenue as a result of a law that was signed last year. State aid has remained the same since 2010. While the city has judiciously used contribution funds from its parking service utility due to the 2020 pandemic, the parking service’s financial condition has been severely impacted. In 2019, the city anticipated $800,000 in revenue from the parking services utility as a contribution to the general operating budget. However, that amount was zero in 2021, and we expect that to be the case through years to come. Since 2016, I stated publicly many times over the years that Summit has a revenue issue. I stated earlier, the city has very few options to generate revenue for its operating budget. And the city has a debt service issues as well. In 2012, the city’s municipal debt service payment was $2.8 million. In 2016, it was $3.2 million. This year, it will be $5.6 million. So, why am I sharing this information with you now? It is because the city unequivocally needs to find ways to generate new revenue sources, which brings me to the reason why the city pursued redevelopment and desires to enter into a financial agreement with the Broad Street West redevelopers. Municipalities use payment in lieu of taxes to encourage development of a project that might not otherwise be financially viable. I will leave that explanation and illustration up to the city’s financial advisor when he attends a public meeting soon to go over the financial analysis of the Sub District 3 project. At that time, the public will see and hear why the city negotiated its $8 million land price, why the $8 million is a fair market value to receive for this land, and why a pilot program is necessary for this project. However, please be mindful what the $8 million can be used for over the next eight to 10 years, which is to pay down its $16 million debt obligation related to the new fire headquarters. The only other point I will make is that when a pilot is used for the redevelopment project, the municipality receives 95% of the annual gross revenue generated by the project each year. The other 5% goes to the county. For the Sub District 3 project, we expect that to mean two and a half times more in annual net revenue for what the city would receive in annual municipal tax revenue under an ordinary tax assessment arrangement. Over the next 30 years, it will mean tens of millions of dollars in new tax revenue or new revenue period for the city to use in its municipal budget to ease the future burden on taxpayers. And that is solely generated in the Sub District 3 project. More revenue will come from future development projects within Sub Districts 1 and 2. I hope this information is helpful in understanding why this project is fiscally important for the municipality. More will be shared about the pilot agreement at a time when we can legally speak about it in public after the redevelopment agreement has been fully negotiated. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate that background, and that’ll be very useful when we get to the point of talking about the letter of intent in the agenda. And now, I have just a couple of council presidents’ report items. First is, the Department of Community Programs has now opened their registration for spring and summer programs. There’s a wide variety of programs and classes being offered, from fencing to soccer to photography, chess, and robotics. Learn more about programs at summitcommunityprograms.com. And finally, a reminder for businesses, the state ban on single-use carryout bags and polystyrene foam food service containers will go into effect on May 4, 2022. The law prohibits all New Jersey stores, food service businesses, and grocery stores from selling single-use plastic carryout bags. In addition, grocery stores larger than 2,500 square feet may not provide or sell single-use paper carryout bags, and instead must provide or sell only reusable carryout bags. The new law also prohibits all persons and food service businesses from selling any polystyrene foam food service product — try saying that five times fast — or selling any food served in polystyrene foam food service product containers. So, for more information, please visit the City of Summit website, cityofsummit.org/statedban. And now, we’re moving on to our presentations. We’re very fortunate tonight, in honor of Black History Month, to have students from the Summit High School Black Student Union. So, thank you for being here tonight, and come on up.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I’m Subi Nakadu, president and founder of the Black Student Union at Summit High School, as well as co-creator of the Race and American Experience elective at SHS. Being a Black student at SHS means being the minority, and most of the times, the only person of color in rooms of so many. Congregating or having a chance to be with other Black students has always been a rare occasion, or, to be honest, something that didn’t happen at all. Seeing that there was little to no opportunity for Black students to come together at a school where we weren’t the majority fueled my motivation to create a club centered around the celebration and empowerment of Black students in the building. Though creating the BSU during online instruction came with hardships, it’s a decision I’m glad I made. As a student born in Summit but raised in Uganda, a country where I was the majority, moving back to Summit was the first time I had to go through many of the hardships and baffling experiences that come with being a Black student in academia. While it may be a hard pill to swallow, many Black students in Summit go through feelings of self-doubt, as well as being undermined and not celebrated by the community they exist in. I’m not here to sugarcoat what we go through, but rather to shed light on a group of people that deserve just as much as the majority. Our attitudes to persevere and our power to succeed is the very reason why we’ve chosen to highlight this for Black History Month. Black history is not just a remembrance of the past, but an occasion that marks the very significant steps of the future that still needs to be made. We are Black history, and greatness, achievement, and success are our aspirations. Through conversations like these, I hope to open the eyes of the community and begin a conversation that’s taken too long to begin.
Hi, I’m Vanessa Jackson, and I’m the Secretary of the Black Student Union. Like Subi said, the Black Student Union is just a place where we can be ourselves and be around people that go through the same struggles as us. And I appreciate Subi for creating this union, and I’ll make sure it lives on after she graduates this year.
And I’m Nima, and I’m also a part of the Black Student Union, and I’m so excited to be a part of it, coming into the high school, and excited to really be able to have
So, a little bit about the creation of the Black Student Union. Like I said, it was created in the 2021-2022 school year. It is a space for Black students to come together, and it also works towards being a space that Black students can congregate and really come together in the building.
Our theme this year is Black Excellence. We really want to make sure we highlight Black Americans who contribute to African-American culture. During February, it’s a time for us to be unapologetically Black, and overall, we just want to educate our classmates and highlight all of our history. This is the process. This is Subi, Diane, and I. We’re braiding yarn to add to our display that we’ll show later.
So, some of the things that we do have on display for Black History Month are poems by very famous poets, Black poets, songs played in the hallways during Fridays, and clothing that just shows different aspects of Black culture, and hair as well, Black hair, because that is a very important part of Black culture, and artwork as well from famous artists, as well as Black artists at SHS.
Some of the poetry we have is from Tupac, “The Roses That Grew From Concrete,” Maya Angelou, and Amanda Gorman. This is the upstairs display that we put together for Black History Month. It has poems, different artworks, and overall, the theme is Black Excellence, like I said
Some of the artists we have on display are Kehinde Wiley, Masquod, and Ila Loz, who is a SHS senior.
There are some of our classic artists, Ellis Wilson, “Funeral Procession,” and Frank Morrison, “The Jump Off,” and here are their work. Uplifting Black culture through songs. We wanted to make sure we highlight musical talent, since a lot of our students like listen to music. Black musical artists such as Aretha Franklin, Tupac, and Beyoncé have been celebrated with their music played throughout the hallways every Friday, during like every periods, like the periods that we go from first period, second period, and so on. This is our display that we have downstairs. Our Black History Month fashion display can be found outside the SHS Foundation. Our display aims to highlight the different styles of Black fashion and capture its clothing as an art form. As you can see, we have a lady in the middle with curls. Those are the braids that we were making in the picture before, and they have barrettes on them. There’s traditional African-American culture clothing and more artwork. Here’s a close-up picture. Respect our roots.
So, being unapologetically Black means embracing our culture, being ourselves, educating others on our diversity, and bringing people together.
For example, we partner with the Spanish Club here at SHS, and tomorrow, we’re making Carnival masks, and it’s just an opportunity to, you know, like, I guess, combine and collaborate with other clubs here at SHS.
And something that we also have planned is a Friday blackout, which means that we’re planning for all students to be wearing black at the end of the month to commemorate Black History Month.
You can visit Summit High School to see the displays after 3:00 p.m. Thank you for your time.
Ladies, thank you for that wonderful presentation. The mayor has certificates that she’d like to hand out to you if you’d like to step up. And thank you for taking the time this evening, you know, to do one of the things you listed here, which is to educate and also to bring people together. So, we appreciate what you’ve done tonight. If you want to step around, we can get a picture with you guys with the mayor.
Well, thank you, ladies, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. And we’ve got a tremendous group of people here who are really working hard to do what our community wants to do. Diversity is a word thrown around all the time, but when you actually work hard at it and put your heart and soul into it and do the groundwork, which you’ve done here in creating the program, that’s fantastic. So, I’m very, very proud of you, and thank you very much. So, the first, I don’t know how many folks here, but the first is definitely goes to the Summit Facebook Black Student Union, the entire group, in recognition of the contribution celebrating Black History Month and the presentation of Summit Common Council on February 15, 2022.
That will be the advisory.
Okay.
The next is to Subi. Thank you very much, Subi. Well done. They all say the same thing. And the next is to Vanessa Jackson. Vanessa, thank you very much. And to Nima Lloyd, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Danell Marsh?
I’m here. You’re very, very happy to have me.
So, thank you very much for everything you do. And lastly, Trevor Pumbel. Thank you. And very nice to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for that lovely presentation, and now, we’ll move on to the public comment period. So, at this point in the meeting, we’re going to welcome comments from any member of the public on issues that are not topics on tonight’s business agenda. Just a quick reminder, a couple of the topics that I think we’ve heard the most about are on the agenda tonight, and so, we will be handling those as part of the resolution. So, the letter of intent on Broad Street West, so, any Broad Street West comments, I’m going to ask you to hold till the time we get to that resolution, and as well as the Maple Street closure, which I believe there were some comments about that as well. So, anything that is not on the agenda is what we will be taking public comments on right now. So, if you would please come up, state your name and address, and I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And do we have anyone who’d like to speak on anything other than those topics?
Hi.
Good evening.
Hey.
Can you move the microphone? Yeah.
Sorry, I moved it.
Can I take my mask off? You have to keep it on.
Prefer to leave it on. And if the students, you’re certainly welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, there’s no obligation for you to stay. I know you probably all have schoolwork to do. So, just, you know, feel free. We won’t be offended. Okay, go ahead. I’m sorry.
Okay. Dori Gagnon, G-A-G-N-O-N, 27 Bedford Road. So, I have a parking issue. Do I have to address this during the closure for Maple Street?
I’m sorry.
It has a parking issue.
It’s a parking issue about Maple Street?
In town.
Or just generally?
Town and the parklets.
Okay, that’s fine.
I can talk about that now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I had surgery in the fall, and so, for people who have had surgery can kind of relate to what I went through. I wasn’t able to drive for a long time. I had a, I still have a handicap tag, because sometimes I’m not able to walk my long distances, and I’m an athlete. It took me a long time to get back to where I was. So, in the fall, you know, I liked the outdoor dining, but we had a lot of parklets, and we had the closure on Maple Street. So, my question to you is, I would like to know how many parking spots were taken up by the parklets and the outdoor dining? If somebody could get back to me and let me know that, because it really inconvenienced me when I had to go to stores and I had to walk a very far distance. And I’m young, but we have a lot of older citizens and people who are people with disabilities in town, and I think it’s really important to take that into consideration when we’re closing the streets and we’re closing. And we, I don’t know what the parklet situation is going to be this spring, but it’s really something to address. My husband has also had multiple surgeries over the last couple of years. He just had his hip replaced last week. And when we’re going to have a lot of older citizens and people who are people with disabilities in town. And I think it's really important to take that into consideration when we're closing the streets and we're closing. And we, I don't know what the parklet situation is going to be this spring, but it's really something to address. My husband has also had multiple surgeries over the last couple of years. He just had his hip replaced last week. And when we're going to stores, we forget often that it's, a block doesn't seem that far away, but when you need to go to a store and you're parking two or three blocks away, it really takes a lot of effort to get there. So that's one of my concerns. The other one is I really miss coming to these meetings. I'm very active online, and I'm very active politically with people, and I like to be engaged. So thank you for all taking your time, and the new people who are here, and the mayor, thank you. I really appreciate your time and your volunteer. I appreciate the fact that these displays are up. I think it's great. The technology is here, obviously. I think it might be something to revisit with Zoom, that Ms. Little is on Zoom and able to participate. It would be great for me not being able to be here. And I really think something in the future that if we could get grants or something to look into, I know the cost was something that was explored, but in the future, if we could look at having this capability for people at home, like me, who wasn't able to be here, I would really appreciate it. And then my husband even said he would like to be here to talk about the Broad Street West development, and he can't be, but it's something that I know a lot of people at home who can't physically get here would like to be a part of. So I know that Ms. Little's been on Zoom a lot. Something like me, I would have really benefited from over the last couple of months. So those are the topics I want to just address now, and then I will come back up here later. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gagnon. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? Council President, I do have one. One we're done here.
Okay, all right.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Irene. I live in town. I've been here the last couple of weeks. I feel like we could have really gotten through my questions about the Zoom if we were able to ask a question, get a response, ask a question, but now I'm here four weeks, you know, from the first time I asked the question about Zoom. So the last time I was here, you said that the reason why we couldn't have Zoom available was there were legal reasons that if for some reason Zoom went out, that you could get sued or something like that. And so that's why we can't have Zoom. But I know that other cities do. Do they not care about the legal reasons? They have been conducting them for months, but somehow we keep saying that there are legal reasons that we can't participate via Zoom as citizens, but the council members can. So I'm wondering if someone can go into that further and tell us why our citizens can't participate via Zoom. It feels like you're dragging your feet about something, because other towns do it. Other towns in New Jersey participate with their council meetings and their citizens via Zoom. Even the members at the Elk can participate in their meetings via Zoom. So there's, I feel like you're not giving us the whole picture.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to take all the comments, and then we'll answer them all afterwards, because there is some overlap between them. Are there any other comments from members of the public on non-agenda topics? Come on up.
I wasn't really prepared, but it just.
Oh, just wait till you get to the microphone so everyone can hear. And state your name and address, please.
My name's Lauren Nelson. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, everybody. So this is just something that just came up right now, actually. So I am just wondering if there's anybody on council, actually, who speaks Spanish, because there's a lot of people in town who speak Spanish. And I'm wondering if there's anybody else in the public who speaks Spanish?
So we're not taking?
Yeah, you gotta address the council.
You can't, you can't?
Oh, only to you. Sorry.
Yeah, you're not allowed to poll the public.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, sorry. I'm not aware of the rules. Okay, so.
No worries. Yeah, that's okay.
So, yeah.
Ms. Nelson, we also need your address. I apologize. Could you, the clerk?
Oh, where I, where I am in town?
Where you live. Yes, please.
I'm at 20 Plain Street right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm originally from town. I've traveled quite a bit, and I've been back for a little bit now.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So, yeah, I was just wondering about that, because I do know that it might be helpful. I know there's a lot of people in town who do speak Spanish, and I don't know if they ever really come to the meetings or if they're represented very much. I just think about it because I speak Spanish, and it might also be helpful. I don't know. But, yeah. And if you, I don't know if there's any way to like translate the meetings or have some sort of, I don't know if you share them with the public either, like, do you have recordings of this online or?
Yes, these meetings are recorded online. They're on YouTube Live, and they're on Hometown TV, the broadcast.
Cool.
And you can find them on the city's website.
Yeah.
The city's website also does translate everything into Spanish.
Oh, wonderful. Cool.
There's like a little button where you can just hit Spanish, and the whole thing is all translated.
And then these meetings also, there's like?
Uh, no, I don't think.
I don't know about that.
Not the meetings, but you can find a lot of information online in Spanish.
Okay.
I'm not sure how the translation, like how good it is, or if it's like a Google Translate, but it is, it is a resource that we have.
Awesome. Yeah, just, I guess, just seeing the young, you know, students coming here from the Black Student Union, and then I was thinking, oh, are there any Latinos here? And, you know, just wanted to bring that up and say.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thanks for listening.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the public? Did you, were you raising your hand, sir, back there?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, come on up.
I just have a couple of comments. Thank you.
Can you please just state your name and address?
My name is Darrell Tony.
Okay, thanks.
21 Park Avenue. And I would like to thank the council very much for recognizing the minorities in the town today during Black History Month. And my mother was Esther Tony. I don't know if any of you know her.
Oh, yeah, we know her.
Okay. All right. She was my mom, and that's my first cousin right there. I'd like to recognize her as well. But just thank you all very, very much for recognizing Black History Month. I appreciate that.
Thank you. It was a pleasure having the students in. So thank you for that comment. Any other comments from members of the public? Good evening.
Hello again. Erwin Miller, 5 Knob Hill Drive, your favorite commentator. First, you know, I want to apologize. I feel like my demeanor normally the past few weeks or whatever it is hasn't been exactly professional, let's say, somewhat here and there. But hopefully, you can understand, you know, my feeling is, and a lot of parents in town who were at the Board of Education meeting, I don't know if anyone else was there, a lot of parents in town, at least for myself, and I don't speak for them, my feeling is my children are being abused by the governor, by the Department of Health, and by everybody else who is complicit in whatever is happening here and these sort of mandates and interventions that are being placed on very young children in daycares, especially in daycares, but also those in elementary school, junior high, and high school. I don't know if anybody here was at the Board of Education meeting. If you weren't, I encourage you to go watch the video of the parents giving testimonial. It's terrible what these kids are going through. And it's clear now that the downside is outweighing the upside. And so you can only assess that it's a net negative. And if it's a net negative, it's a harm. And if it's a harm, it's a harm on our kids. So normally, I'm a nice guy. I really am. And I'm not moved to do any of this. But at this point, we've had enough. A lot of us have had enough. And I know a lot of people voiced their concern at the Board of Education meeting last week. We applaud the governor for the decision he made. I want it to be clear. This mask relaxation rule coming up March 7th, it's great. We applaud him for that. We will applaud politicians who make good choices. But please understand, if bad choices continue with that, if it's conditional, if the mandates come back, if there are differential rules for vaccinated kids versus non-vaccinated kids, if we're continuing to social distance these children, if we continue to harm their mental health, parents will stop being quiet. It's going to get louder and louder. You have to understand that. And I know that this is not your purview. I understand that. This is not your role. I understand that. But you all have a role in talking to your colleagues and your bosses and the DNC and the DSCC and all the fundraisers and all the consultants and everyone involved in this, because there's going to be a trickling effect around here, especially in November. And, you know, I really, it's a shame what the state is doing to our children, and everyone's pointing fingers at each other, saying it's someone else's fault. I have other things to say tonight. I'll share those over email.
Your time is up.
I know my time is up. I appreciate it, but please understand, our children are being hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to read the email that we received.
Council President, we received one email from Angela Schroeder of Essex Road. And her email reads as follows. I think the most pressing, pressing issue facing the City of Summit is crime. I think it is unacceptable that we do not have a police chief in place at this time. I think this should be the number one priority of the city council. And that's it.
Okay, thank you for reading that. Madam Mayor, I'm going to like to respond.
Yes, I'd like to respond to that. I know Ms. Schroeder, and I respect her greatly, but I disagree with her wholeheartedly. We do have a very esteemed police chief in charge of the Summit Police Department right now. And her statement is untenable. Chief Sagorsky, while he is the acting chief, has been in the Summit Police Department for over 30 years. He has tremendous investigative and operational experience. In the midst of this ridiculous epidemic, and unfortunate epidemic of car thefts, he is the right person to be leading us, and I have the utmost confidence in him. And I, chief, I apologize for that email. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Councilmember Little, as Chair of Safety, would also like to say something. Go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Like you said, I am currently the Chair of the Safety Committee, also the co-chair of the Safety Committee two years ago. And I also, my former career is as a criminal prosecutor. So I've worked, as I stated before, as a police chief, both here in New Jersey and in Virginia and New Hampshire. I'm very familiar with how police departments work. And I want to also reiterate what the mayor said. We do have a police in Summit. We have, we not only have a police chief and acting chief Sagorsky, we have an excellent police chief here in Summit. He has been with the department since 1989. He has held every ROVER department from patrol officer, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, now acting chief. He is highly trained, highly experienced, highly decorated, and any department in New Jersey or anywhere would be lucky to have him. We are lucky to have him as our police chief right now. He has the full faith of this council. As we heard, he has the full faith of the mayor, and more importantly, he has the full faith of the department and the officers. So that statement just could not be more wrong. We have a police chief, we have an excellent police chief, and we are very grateful to Sagorsky for taking on this role at this time. And I apologize for the tone of that statement, because it's just not correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. And I think I speak for all the council members in echoing that sentiment. So with that, we'll respond to some of the other comments. Ms. Gagnon, we were going to have, we'll have to get back to you on the number of spots because I don't know that. And Rita McNanny, our parking, the head of our parking services is not here this evening. So, but I, you know, I am sorry to hear about your surgeries, and I wish you a speedy recovery. As far as the capability for Zoom, I'm going to turn that over to our city attorney.
What we've explained before regarding Zoom is this is an open public meeting that you have to advertise at least 40 hours in advance in the newspapers, and it's really to conduct business. And the problem with Zoom, and I represent a lot of different municipalities and school boards, is when everything is on Zoom, if something goes down and people can't participate, or you can't have public comment, what ends up happening is the meeting has to get canceled. You can't continue a meeting if an aspect of it goes down. When you have one councilperson who's participating via Zoom, if that connection gets broken and it's not here, we still have a quorum. We still have sufficient number of councilmembers here this evening who can vote. Because the fundamental premise of a meeting is to conduct business. And with the conduction of business, you can see there's ordinances to be passed, resolutions to be passed, personnel items taking place. Probably one of the most important things on every council meeting is called a bills list. The city has to pay its various vendors, its contractors, its suppliers of items. And so the reason that the government put in the temporary emergency use of Zoom back in March of 2020 was in order for government to be able to, to be conducted. For many, many years, literally hundreds of years, meetings were conducted in public, and the Open Public Meeting Act is supposed to be conducted in public. Zoom is really an exception to that, to that premise. So the reason that we do the public meeting with bodies here is so that, God forbid, things go down. And I think at the last meeting, we actually had a connection problem with the Zoom. It happens all the time. We had another meeting during the pandemic where we could not get on, what was it called, YouTube Live. It was a half hour delayed. When that happens, if you can't get on, you cancel the meeting. What ends up happening then, if the meeting gets canceled, vendors don't get paid, resolutions don't get passed. For example, this evening, we're doing something on a sick leave for an employee who requires sick leave. That has to happen at a meeting. And so my recommendation to this council is you should endeavor to do your meetings in public. If we're hit with another pandemic or a thing, we'll pivot and deal with it at that point. And I can tell you, I go to hundreds of public meetings a year. The vast majority of them, school boards, public bodies, the vast majority of them are conducting them back in public now. They're not utilizing Zoom. Some are, but most people are doing it back in public. And the one thing with the school boards, why are school boards doing it? Well, our teachers and our students are back at school, live. The school boards are doing it live. And it's an example that we're expecting our kids to go into school live. Why can't council people be here? We have exceptions, and it's permitted to have it, but the main reason is you have all these people here. God forbid, Zoom goes down, we can still conduct business tonight. We don't have to cancel the meeting. So that's my recommendation to this council, and that's why they're following it.
Thank you, Mr. Giacobbi.
Yep.
Okay, now we're moving on. So I'm going to close the public comment period, and we'll move on to ordinances for introduction. And I'm going to call on Councilmember Hairston.
Oh, you have to read it. Right.
And we haven't done one for a while.
Yes, of course.
We have an ordinance under Law and Labor ID number 9427, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, subsection 2-43.5, Powers and Duties.
Go ahead now, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President.
Thanks for the reminder.
I want to introduce for hearing ordinance number 9427, which is to amend the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2, 43, Rent Commission, subsection 2, 43.5, Powers and Duties. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the Code to remove the Rent Commission's power to issue subpoenas. This amendment is required because New Jersey law has changed. And what we want to make clear is somehow we weren't really certain how this happened, but the Rent Commission in this chapter was allocated the authority to issue subpoenas, which are only designated for a legal entity, which is our council, which is our planning board, and our zoning board. And so the law is requiring us to change our ordinance to match the law and to remove that subpoena power. So I move this ordinance for hearing.
A second.
Right, and that's for introduction.
For introduction, excuse me. Thank you.
Okay, so we will have the hearing on this on March 1st. Council President, would you like me to report? Oh, yes. Okay. Would you please? Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, and now we're moving on to resolutions. So we have a few finance resolutions. Councilmember Barton, if you'd like to get started on finance number one, please.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 9466. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the temporary municipal operating budget. Three reminders. First, the temporary operating budget exists until the 2022 municipal operating budget is finalized and adopted. Second, the temporary budget Second, the temporary budget can only be 26.5% of the total of the prior year's budget. And third, this is not an emergency. This is the statutory language used to ensure money is in the correct accounts to be able to pay bills on time until our final budget is adopted. The total amount of this appropriation is $90,000, and it brings the total temporary municipal operating budget to $11,408,523. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this topic? Okay, hearing none. All those, we need a roll call for this. Madam Clerk, could you please read the whole call? Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to finance number two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9468. And this resolution authorizes canceling open balances of completed projects and unexpended balances of projects as of December 31, 2021. This is money that was authorized to be spent on capital projects in the past that have now been completed. And this is a good accounting practice by our CFO, Tammy Baldwin. More than $650,000 will be returned to the Capital Improvement Fund or the capital surplus and will reduce our outstanding bonds and notes that are authorized but not issued. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council on this topic? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one last finance resolution, Councilmember Vartan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is number 9473. And this resolution authorizes the City of Summit to become a member of the New Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System. So this is one of several cooperative pricing groups, of which Summit will be a member, that provides for better prices on goods and services. There is no cost to the city for this, and it will become effective upon passage of this resolution until November of 2024, and then automatically renewed annually thereafter unless the city formally chooses to withdraw. It's hard to predict how much the city might have saved from our membership in each of these cooperative pricing systems. But I think it's safe to say tens of thousands of dollars at a minimum on an annual basis. So I fully support this, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to law and labor. Councilmember Hairston, would you like to do Law and Labor number one, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I am introducing for resolution ID number 9483, which is to authorize the execution of agreement and memorandum of agreement for the F M B A Local Number 54, which was pending closed session discussion. And this resolution authorizes our memorandum of agreement and the collective negotiations agreement between the City of Summit and the Firemen's Benevolent Association for the years January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025. And we are very pleased to have this year-long negotiation come to a conclusion. And it consists of 30 uniformed members who are under this agreement and the city's contract, which expired on January 1, 2021. Both parties engaged in contract negotiations over multiple formal meetings since October 2020. And on January 21, 2022, the F M B A ratified the attached M O A, Memorandum of Agreement. And at this time, the city administrator is recommending approval of this ratified M O A that contains financial amendments and other non-financial terms as stated within the full contract that is available online. And so I introduce this resolution for approval.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? On it?
I, um...
Go ahead and state in your name again.
Oh, sorry, Erwin Miller, Five Knob Hill Drive. I like you, Ms. Hairston.
You're supposed to address all.
I find Susan Hairston to be a great person, friendly, so far I've met her.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think it is a pattern that we've seen that our elected officials can flaunt the rules, and my three-year-old doesn't have the option to take his mask off.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. But I do appreciate you. I just need to point that out.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, are there any comments on this resolution from the public?
I, I'm sorry, may I make a comment? I would like to thank our city administrator for the hours and the time and also the union members' leadership for the commitment to settling this contract. I neglected to say that, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hairston. So I think we can call for a vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to Law and Labor number two.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm introducing ID number 9488 to authorize the extension of sick leave with pay for a Department of Community Programs employee that we discussed in closed session. This employee needs the extension of sick leave to be throughout the end of the month of February 28, 2022.
You're moving this?
I'm moving this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to community programs and parking services. So with Councilmember Miniger, would you like to start with resolution number one?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9470. And this resolution authorizes the execution of a contract for the Summit Family Aquatic Center food concessions from 2022 through 2026. After a detailed evaluation of four potential food vendors who responded to a request for proposal, the Department of Community Programs settled on TM Foods for their food concessions at the aquatic center. TM Foods is being awarded this contract based on the amount they will be paying to the city over a five-year period, the diversity of the menu items, the prices offered to customers, and 30-plus years of food concession experience that they bring. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one more, Community Programs, number two, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9443. And this resolution authorizes an increase in the participant dynamic rideshare cost from $2 to $3 per trip beginning April 1, 2022. The Dynamic Rideshare Program has been an option for Summit parking permit holders since 2016, initially introduced as a way to free up spaces in lots and garages and to provide an alternative to driving to the train station. Since June 2021, the cost per ride to the city has increased enough that an adjustment is needed to help offset that just a bit. This minimal increase from $2 to $3 at current ridership will save the city approximately $12,000 versus no change in this price. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say it's a really difficult time to see price increases. But I do, I support that we have to do this necessary increase. So hate to do it to the public, but it's still a steal. So.
Thank you. And I agree with you on that. What we are seeing, this is being done in part because we're seeing very large increases from Uber and Lyft. And this program was really designed to help deal with capacity issues in our parking lots. And right now, there's plenty of capacity in our parking lots. So sadly, because there is, you know, because people aren't commuting into the city. So it's, you know, it's a program we're keeping in place because we think that we will see people returning to working in the city and taking the train. And so we don't want to lose the momentum we've started with this program. So I think, you know, on balance, this is, this is what we need to do. And it's still, as Councilmember Allen said, at $3 for a ride to the train from any place in Summit, a steal for the residents. Any other comments from members of council? Members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we're on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to take the first one?
Sure, thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9484, to appoint a chief inspector in the Department of Community Services. As we discussed in the closed session, Ralph Meritado will assume the additional title of chief inspector with no additional salary or benefits. And I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? So just to explain quickly, this is being done, it's kind of a housekeeping measure because some statutes talk about a chief inspector. So the idea is that this, you know, our building and code inspector also has to be a chief inspector for the purposes of those statutes. It's the simplest way to solve the problem of the inconsistencies in the titles that are given. So with that, if no one has any comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to capital projects, number two, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9448, to authorize the execution of a letter of intent by and between the City of Summit and Broad Street West Managers 1 LLC, an entity comprised of L and M Development Partners Incorporated and Toll Brothers Incorporated, in connection with the redevelopment of the Broad Street West redevelopment area. Negotiations regarding Sub District 3 on Broad Street West have been ongoing between the City of Summit and Broad Street West Managers, which comprises L and M Development Partners and Toll Brothers. The execution of the letter of intent allows us to publicly share the terms that have been agreed upon while allowing the city to continue negotiations on outstanding items. You can look at this letter of intent as a letter of transparency. It is not typical for a municipality to take this step. But with so much public interest in the project, council wanted to find a way to share information with the public. And the city was advised that this is the best tool to accomplish our goal. Both parties agree that the letter of intent is non-binding unless and until a redevelopment agreement is successfully negotiated specific to Sub District 3. Before I move this resolution, I want to thank you. Your valuable input and engagement in the process has made a difference in where we stand today. Please stay engaged with the mayor and council and attend the upcoming meetings where more information will be shared. And with that, I move this resolution.
My second.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. So at this point, are there any comments from members of council on this letter of intent? Was that a yes, Councilmember Allen? Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, wow, okay.
First one with your hand up, so.
Wow. Thank you, Councilwoman O'Sullivan. This will just take a couple of minutes. Can I get, did I get three minutes?
No, council members aren't limited.
So I just want to make an observation. Over the last month, there has been an enormous amount of interest in our community as we crawl out of this pandemic, and I'm breaking the rules. As we crawl out of this pandemic, people are showing up at Board of Ed meetings. They're showing up in council. And they're showing up at the redevelopment last Wednesday. And I think the last two years, most people have put one foot in front of the next in order just to get through the day. And what I find really exciting is it's not easy, but I think showing up again and being present is one of the most exciting things for me. And I would hope to speak that I'm speaking for my colleagues. What I noticed was that last Wednesday, there were over 100 people in that room. And not only were there over 100 people, there were people standing. So I don't know how many more people there were. But in a town of 22,000 people, I would say that percentage is .0001%. So I think as we're emerging to this next step in our community and society and showing up again, I think it's really important to engage and that we understand what this vote is. So what are we voting on tonight? And I just want to give my opinion that, to me, I was talking to my husband, and I said, you know what? What I've realized is this vote tonight is one of the most important votes, consequential votes, that I will take. I take a lot of care and time and concern about what we're voting on tonight. And my next vote, probably the most consequential, will be on this agreement. And so when I say that, I say that I've lived in Summit for 12 years, and I love this home. My husband and I have built an incredible family. We've made amazing friendships that will last a lifetime. My kids have gone to incredible schools, and they'll come home for holidays, and they're going to see their friends. That's what I love about Summit. And I've taken a lot of calls from individuals, from friends, from residents, who've just asked, what is this letter of intent? And I think that we've already touched on it, and I don't want to go too deep into it. But what is the letter of intent to me? It looks like a lot of legal stuff. People didn't understand it. They said, can we change the name? It should really be a memorandum of understanding. The letter of intent, just for this public, is that it is a real estate term, it can't be changed. So just so you know that. And the letter of intent, as Councilwoman O'Sullivan said to me, was about transparency. It's a letter of transparency. So right now, there are two negotiating parties. There's a developer, and there's the city. And right now, they're negotiating, and the letter of intent is a step in the process, which doesn't always happen, which allows the city, the residents, I'm sorry, the residents, to see a portion of this process. I want you guys to see, personally, I'm sure my colleagues do too, I'm just speaking for myself, that I would like the city and the residents to understand what could be revealed through this process. Because for me, I know in May or June, we will vote on this. And I don't want the ink to be dry without some questions answered. The balance is, is that this property doesn't take in a lot of revenue, and so it has to be redeveloped. And this has been a longstanding discussion, so we're kind of here today. And we have to balance the idea that there's this piece of property that there are a lot of people that are excited about, in the sense that there's empty nesters who are like, I would love to stay in Summit, but I can't stay because there's nowhere to go. There's young professionals I've met who, I work downtown, and they're like, that's really cool. We're going to have a place to go. There's a diverse population that we can meet and engage in our community. Because when I've been in Summit, everybody I meet is unique, they're different. And there's something about how we've come together in this community. And I understand, I don't want to gloss over the fact that last Wednesday, there were some deep questions, questions that need to be answered, questions that I think about. I think about parking because I park downtown every day. I think about traffic because I want my kids to be safe. And it is going to have a whole different dynamic, a size, a scale. So there are real questions, and there are no stupid questions. Because I've asked a lot of questions, and I'm probably annoyingly so. But I feel like it's really important to me. Because as a layman, I get it. I stepped up on this council a year ago, and there were a lot of things I didn't know. So I just want you to know, I appreciate every phone call that's come in. I will, I don't say too much that I can't say, but I will tell you whatever I know. My ear is for you. We are here for you. I am your voice. And so in conclusion, I just want to say that a lot of the questions, hopefully, over the next few months can get answered, because they're not going to get answered tonight. This process, this letter of intent that we plan on voting on tonight, allows me and the council, and anybody can interrupt if I'm incorrect, but they can weigh, we can give some information that you have over the next three months. give some information that you have over the next three months, to be able to understand the project, and if it feels right to us. And so, this isn't the end, it's a mechanism to explore. And my final vote, of course, would be contingent on answering these questions for the community. And I just want to make sure that when we get an agreement in May and June, I just want to emphasize this, that the public is armed with the details and information that we need to make, to make the best decision possible, and that my vote, when we vote for the agreement eventually, is in the best interest of this community. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Does anyone else on the dais want to say anything now? Or should we let, we'll have the public make their comments, and then we'll respond to any comments that, that are made. Does anyone from the public want to step up? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
My name is Deborah Oliver, 37 Tulip Street.
Okay, hello.
I second everything you said. In fact, you said a lot of the things that I wanted to say, and thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, for the informative presentation. I wish that that presentation had been given at the meeting on Wednesday, because financial information is sorely lacking. And what I would like to ask regarding all of your statements is, does entering into, I know it's a non-binding agreement, I understand it's a good faith, understanding, but does that lead the potential developers into thinking that they're necessarily, that they've necessarily got the final contract? Because one thing that I think was at, at play Wednesday night, well, let me back up for a minute. As you said, the meeting Wednesday night truly was a resurrection of this project. I know it's been going on since 2017, I know there's much information posted online, but we have been in the pandemic twilight zone for two years. So people's energies have really been focused on more important things. So I really had the sense, as I think you said, Wednesday night, that now we're all focusing on this. And it's, everyone realizes that a project of this magnitude has not been done in any of our lifetimes. I mean, I've lived in Summit for 30 years, and, you know, this is a big deal. So my only frustration with the process, which is newly awakened, is that we're not getting the questions answered when we're asking them. So I wonder why there's sort of a dearth of, you know, why, why can't we talk about the basics of a pilot scheme? Why can't we talk about how they might address, you know, the five-story problem, or the we don't want to be South Orange problem? And then why can't we talk about, and I mean with feedback, in, in real time, the never-ending parking slash traffic issue? So I'm wondering, does the letter of intent, by providing greater transparency, is that going to bring forth more information so that these questions aren't, they don't keep getting postponed? So that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to let everyone comment, and then we'll just address them all at once, okay?
Hello?
Hi. Tina Rosen, 142 Mountain Avenue. I, along with my husband and son, have been Summit residents for 10 years. I love that Summit continues to look for ways to improve our town. I watched last week's presentation via YouTube and thought it was terrific. The love that, I love that Summit's working with developers to create a multi-space, multi-purpose space that addresses many needs. The existing space is, in my opinion, ugly in a sea of cement. I love that the area is being repurposed with a beautiful building and green spaces, that this will offset the cost of the new firehouse and add housing close to downtown. I look forward to learning how much additional tax revenue this will bring to Summit. I also look forward to hearing how parking challenges will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen.
Okay, anyone else? Come on up, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Rades and members of council. Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue. I address council with three specific points concerning the Broad Street West redevelopment project. First, I ask council to defer the signing of a letter of intent for one month, to hold the record open for latecomers to the public input process, unless the letter of intent really is necessary for transparency. As past president of the Summit Tennis Association, I underwent a similar experience. Council and we were willing to sign off on the eight-court refurbishment of the tennis courts at Memorial Field, then two Glen Oaks Avenue residents came forward and objected to the scale of the project. We wanted more than anything to have as many courts as there had been in the town before, but council and we listened to the objections and agreed that six courts were more appropriate for that space. I know there has been out, public outreach on this project, but sometimes it takes time for residents to focus on public issues. Last Wednesday, about 100 residents attended the L. and Toll Brothers presentation. Some there became aware of this project for the first time. And almost to a person, the speakers raised objections about the project, and most of the objections went to the scale. One speaker recommended that a copy of the proposal go to every household in town, and perhaps that's a good, not a bad idea. My second request is to evaluate this project independently of any offsets it may bring to the cost of a new fire headquarters. The city must build a new fire headquarters anyway. I understand that a so-called 30-year pilot payment in lieu of taxes is a subject of discussion. Before we can know whether this pilot is in the interest of Summit, we need an analysis of how much in sales revenue and taxes this project will bring in over 30 years without a pilot. The study should juxtapose these revenues with an objective calculation of the increased cost of, for public education, police and fire protection, waste removal, and other city services. And I'm not aware that the city has undertaken this exercise, and it should. One notes that this project is not what qualifies as a, quote, "ratable." Third, the scale of the project is large. That's why I asked last Wednesday if it would be feasible to do away with the fifth floor. Mr. Abramson from the planning firm did not think so, but he said the economic analysis had not considered a scenario like that. I think L. and M. Toll Brothers could find a way to make the project feasible if they sharpened their pencils. A comparison of this project with the senior center across the street is neither apposite nor analogous. In its own right, the senior center took a warehouse and several tenements off the tax rolls, but it generates, in its defense, slight pressure on parking and no demand on public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Come on up, Ms. Davis. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Karen Davis, and I'm a resident at 44 Ridgedale Avenue. First, I would like to thank the mayor and common council members for their financial responsibility in seeking to redevelop Subdivision Three in a way that will keep our taxes as low as possible. Second, I would like to thank the mayor and common council for their transparency in posting the planning documents on the city website throughout the process and giving residents a chance to speak up. Last week, I attended one of your public meetings to discuss the Subdivision Three plans. That meeting helped me understand things better, but I still had questions. So yesterday, I got in my car with my two dogs, and I drove uptown to look around. Since the building proposed for Sub District Three was five stories, I wanted to see how such a building would fit into our town. Driving around, I found that the Beacon Apartments on Summit Avenue include a five-story building. Around the corner on Euclid, number one Euclid is six floors. Strathmore House is six or seven floors, depending on how you count with the hill there, and Beacon Hill Towers is five or six floors. Heading into the business district at the corner of Springfield and Beechwood, I saw that the building that houses the Blue Mercury Shop was five stories high, straight up from the sidewalk. Seeing these buildings, which already exist in our downtown, told me that the proposed five-story building in Subdivision Three would fit in. So that answered my first question. My next question was, what would be the overall appearance of this new building? To answer that, I parked my car by the voting drop box near the firehouse, and I got out with my dogs. I walked around the whole Subdivision Three development area twice. What I found was that currently, aside from some very nice plantings near the chapel, the ground in Subdivision Three is almost completely covered over by either pavement or buildings. With almost no garden beds or grass through this area, it is really not a very pleasant place to walk. This brought me to more reflection about the new building. I realized that I really liked the way the facade of the new building would be set back from the curb to allow for new garden beds along the sidewalk. The building and the sidewalk together would no longer cover so much of the ground in Subdivision Three. There would be enough open soil all around the new building to allow for beautiful-looking gardens that would also serve the purpose of soaking up rainwater to mitigate flooding. With the proposed building, I would have been able to walk my dogs all the way around the development area with something pleasant to look at. After my excursion yesterday, I felt positive about this project. This building would be an attractive and practical way of developing Subdivision Three to help keep everyone's taxes as low as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Davis, would you be able to either provide your statement to the clerk now, or to email it to her afterwards, please? Is it scribbled up, or?
No.
If you wouldn't mind providing it to her, that'd be great. We, we attach all written statements to the minutes.
Do you want me to walk up now?
Yep, come on up. We don't bite. Thank you. Thank you. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Davis Gates, 16 Hughes Place. I also attended the meeting last Wednesday. I've been living in a shell for a couple of years, like a lot of us, trying to survive. And I was impressed and alarmed by the magnitude of the project. And I just want to focus on parking and, you know, parking and traffic, parking and traffic, we're going to hear it over and over again, that that was something that sounded like an oversight. Like a lot of projects in New Jersey, we need to move that to more, a little bit more of the forefront instead of an afterthought. And I just want to make sure that when this project gets off the ground and starts moving, that we, we spend as much time as possible on potentials, and especially the, the Overlook Hospital area. Right now, we have hospitals serving a lot of different communities, and it's a very crowded, especially in the Morris, Morris and Glen Side intersection, is already getting a little cramped, especially with the other projects that are going on nearby. So I would like the, the Traffic Committee to keep looking at that, especially when you, when you start going down from, from Overlook, when you get across the intersections of Mountain Side, you go down to Summit, you go, then you progress on to Maple, and then to Prospect, Locust, and finally, you get all the way across to Springfield. That's going to be a real landmine when you put this building down. I'm not going to oppose the building tonight, but I think it now is the time to start opening up that street, maybe getting some cooperation from the county, and learn how to time those lights so during rush hour, you can flow right through there. I think when you do your traffic surveys, it's not just volume of traffic, it's directionality of traffic. I know that certain times of day, it flows in one direction versus the other. Get those lights timed, so if you're hitting the speed limit, you don't have to stop. You, you got to get this Morris Avenue thing straightened out before you start putting Brooklyn-sized buildings down. I'm, I'm not going to oppose the buildings tonight, but I just, I just wanted to emphasize that, that we really got to get the infrastructure of our streets. And, you know, then you can look at things like Springfield Avenue and so forth. Let's get these streets flowing so we can help some of this traffic, so when we have a real problem on our hands, you'll be more prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Come on up, Ms. Zucco. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Miriam Zucco, 49 Wade Drive. I support the Broad Street West development for the push-in designated Subdivision Three. Although many people are concerned with the height of the building and its impact on the city, my opinion is that this will spruce up the city and provide great opportunities. That part of the city currently does not reflect the vibrancy of our city. The additional green space and walkways will enhance the beauty of the city and encourage people to enjoy the outdoors and to walk rather than drive for restaurants and stores. As an active environmental advocate, I am delighted by the planned landscape with native plants and to power the building with renewable solar energy. These are big steps forward for the city, and I hope will influence future development. I feel that we need to make the city accessible to the next generation of young adults, and I think this project will do that. It makes a car-free existence possible, especially, especially if there will be a grocery store included in another segment of this project. Modern rental apartments will attract young professionals in the way that development in Morristown and other local areas has done. This will bring income to city businesses and new, fresh ideas to our collective community. I also think these rental apartments will be extremely attractive to empty nesters who want to retire in Summit and would find living in town to be a wonderful alternative. Having community gardening space would definitely be a draw for me, since gardening is a hobby and a passion for me, and I would like to think that any garden I would tend would enhance the beauty of the neighborhood. I'm concerned about increased traffic and number and location of parking, as I know are our elected officials. I do not feel that this was adequately addressed at the meeting last week. I agree with some members of the public who suggested that there should be a walkway through that rather large building for people to get from the Memorial Hall side to the Broad Street side without having to walk all the way around the block. I'm also concerned that the overflow parking for City Hall, which is currently the Chestnut Street lot, will be less accessible and a longer walk to get to City Hall. There are members of the public who may be deterred from participating in city meetings by this. Overall, I think we should move forward carefully with this project and involve the citizens of Summit at every opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Zucco.
Thank you. Okay. Come on up, you know, just, anyone who wants to, Mr. DiSocio, do you want to? Okay, and then, then we'll have you, Mr. Von Klemperer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak at this meeting. I have several concerns.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, John DiSocio, 17 Styles Road, Summit.
Thank you.
I, I have a number of concerns about this project. True, we need to redevelop the, the land, but my concerns are, we're putting a five-story condominium in 140 units. That's, that's a lot of people. Only 196 parking spaces for 140 units. And what about for retail? What will the impact of all these units be on the local traffic? Traffic, say. Now, they're projecting only 27 school-aged children. Usually, it's, that's 27 for 140 units. Usually, it's 1.4 per unit. Well, we need to build another school. What will the, what will this be on the quality of life in Summit? I don't know about you folks, but I moved to Summit because of the quality of life in Summit, and so far, I'm very pleased with all that Summit has done for the citizens. My question is, do you want to live in a Mayberry or a Morristown?
Mr. DiSocio, can you explain to me what a Morristown is? I haven't, I, I don't know, and I'm not sure that anyone else. What is it you're objecting to about Morristown?
Morristown, crime.
Crime?
And, in other words, a city. You want to live in a rural town, or do you want to live in a New York City or a Jersey City? We moved here to get away from the city, and not to, her, to live in the city. We want, we like, we like the way that Summit is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so Mr. Von Klemperer, come on up. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Will Von Klemperer, 156 Colonial Road. I thank you, council, mayor, and city managers. The work you're doing on Broad Street West is big. I know it's a heavy lift. And I'm also really respecting and enjoying the questions that residents are asking. My orientation, and I've been in Summit since 1975, is that we have an opportunity here, and I gather, based on the presentation, we need to take it, we need to do something. I, I, my hope, my prayer for the city... I hope, my prayer for the city, is that the questioning, the tough questioning, will help council as they negotiate with the developers. Here's what I'd like to know, because I know you're going to make presentations. Here's what I'd like to know about traffic, finances, and parking. I can see, I read the traffic pie graphs, car trips and everything. That's presumably with Broad Street West. We're going to need a before and after. And then someone has to tell us, non-engineers, how many car trips is okay, how many is too much. Okay? And the exit entrance that we saw at the hearing, the one that goes out onto Morris Avenue near Broad Street, maybe if that can be moved around to Broad Street, that might untangle some of the traffic. And maybe at certain hours, people exiting from Broad Street West, maybe they're only allowed to turn right, if that helps. My two cents on Maple Street is, if we had to leave Maple open in order to make Broad Street West work better, for me, that's a good choice. On finances, Summit has armies of people who understand finance. You know, we're good at this. When you show us the numbers, we're going to understand it. I look forward to that. Clarify when you do how directly this is tied to the firehouse, do firehouse financing or not? I'm unclear on that. And let us know at what point in the process, before we have a final deal, have we committed money that we won't get back if for some reason this stops? I don't even know up till now if there's any sunk costs. When you show us the numbers, I think it'll be an important day. Parking's really hard because COVID just changes everything. In the Chestnut Street lot this morning, there were 11 cars. Yesterday, there were seven. And there's a lot of empty spots in the post office lot, but this is COVID. So one way or another, we're going to have to guess and make a good sober guess. But I came away from the hearing the other week not understanding whether there was going to be parking on what's now the firehouse side, you know, of Broad Street. That looks like an opportunity. I know county rules, whatever. I'm really interested in parking. It's time for a plan. I hope that we can stay, as a city, information-based in this process because that's the best way to get there. To me, I think there's a prize here. We already have an inkling of that. It's worth digging for it. It's worth confronting the stuff that we need, the stuff to do. And I've been in Summit 46 years. This is a big deal. I think it's a good deal. It's worth the sweat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Von Klempner. Come on up. Good evening, Mr. McElhern.
Good evening, Tim McElhern, 47 Clark Street. Just wanted to state my support of this project and echo many of the comments from my friend, Ms. Davis. I think there was a lot of misinformation in the form of questions last week at the meeting at the community center. This project is not in competition with our downtown. It's actually very complimentary. We'll be bringing more people closer to our wonderful stores and restaurants. You cannot ignore the revenue that it's going to bring in. I think that you can't talk about affordability and livability without talking about fiscal responsibility. And the points made by Mr. Rogers and Ms. Allen certainly reflect that. So I would like to conclude by saying this is a large community project, and I hope that by going forward, we work together as a community, you know, regarding questions about parking and traffic, that we come to, you know, the best solution for everyone. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. McElhern. Come on up, Ms. Kramer.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. So the doc presented Wednesday contains a ton of slides and pictures, and there's a lot of outstanding questions. Parking is one of them. Who is responsible for waste management, recycling? And breakdown of units, which I think is going to be important as well. I think that the LOI has been, it was mentioned that this is the first step in being able to provide answers to those questions and transparency to Summit. So I'm interested to know when that information will be ready for public review. Second, there's a conditional agreement from February 2020, and there was a presentation on May 2021. And the estimated number of units was somewhere between 113 to 140. As of last Wednesday and tonight, it seems like that number is now at 140. I'm wondering how the project size increased 20% from May to now, or the firm size increases 20% from May to now, and that may be disclosed in the financials. But if the number of units has increased, why are only 15% allocated for affordable housing? Councilman Varden, in his letter to the editor, referenced a housing crisis. But it seems like the absolute bare minimum is being done to meet the city's legal obligation to build affordable housing. I'm wondering why council's not pushing for more affordable housing in Sub District Three. The realistic development potential for affordable housing is at 36 units, according to the city's website. The additional 40 units, 60 units rather, looks like it's supposed to go between the Y and the library on Maple Street. One of the justifications for these additional units will be to meet our affordable housing commitment. Again, I think that council, if they have some negotiating power, should be doing as much as possible to be meeting our affordable housing commitment with the current redevelopment and not pushing it off to the additional 40 units, 30 to 40 units that are supposed to go between the Y and the library as part of Sub District Two. Third, and this has been brought up already tonight and before, but there is only 28 school-aged children projected to be added. There is no data or context provided around how this number came to be. Do you think that we'll be getting additional information or context around this 28 schoolchildren? Again, I think that this relates to the number of units, being studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. I can tell you, I moved here from New York City. I was in 800 square feet with two kids. So it's doable, guys. You also mentioned 140 apartments, but you didn't mention 10,000 square feet of retail space in Sub District Three. There's a lot of rumors and there's some LOIs about what might go into that retail space. Can council confirm that an Evolve Fitness or a brewery will or will not be going into Sub District Three? These are from LOIs on the city website. Downtown is not at 100% occupancy. And for these reasons, I do not support additional retail in Sub District Three. I think the priority should be on getting downtown fully occupied before building additional retail in Sub District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Any other comments? Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Diane Dreisdahl. I'm 54 Valley View Avenue, Summit, New Jersey, obviously. And I've lived here at least 20 years. I just don't have a prepared statement, and I regret I did not make the meeting, but I wanted to give an overview of my feelings about this project. First, I want to thank everyone, not just council and the professionals, but also the community, for all the thoughtfulness, questions, and concerns. I think that's the way it should be. My overall view is, we need this project. What we have now is, it has to be done. We have an eyesore that is not contributing anything to the community. I do agree that the traffic, the parking, and I'm sure that you, council, is equally concerned and will be addressing it. And that's why these meetings are so great, because the community comes in and points out issues that they're concerned about. I guarantee you that each of our council people are thinking about this and are working on it. So I don't, you know, that's my view. I am concerned about the traffic. I am concerned about parking, but I'm sure that those issues will be addressed as part of the process. When Mr. O'Sullivan mentioned the letter of intent being transparent, I would like more explanation of what that means. And does that include that during, between the time of the letter of intent and the finalization of the contractual relationship, you will be taking further comments from the community, I assume? And that's the point of it, right? So I applaud council for its transparency. I applaud council for taking in consideration of everyone's views and truly taking them into consideration. I'm sure that's part of the decision-making process. I also know that economically, we need to have this. We're losing money vis-à-vis a contractual relationship with overlook. I think it's in the millions of dollars. I'm not quite sure of the details. And we need to fill in that amount of money that we have come accustomed to. As far as the school-aged children, it's my understanding that our numbers have been going down. So, and we built Wilson in pretty quickly, thinking they were going to maintain. And now we have room to, if we, should it be that the predictions are not correct as to the number of schoolchildren that would be residing in this area, we should be able to meet those needs. I know my son's class is many fewer than the classes before him. So, and lastly, I'm going to say, I am one of those people whose last child is heading off to college, and I would like to stay in Summit, and there's no reason for me to maintain this large house with a lot of land and high taxes. And I would like an opportunity to consider a place like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dreisdahl. Come on up, Mr. Nelson. Hello?
How are you?
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you all. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. First of all, I want to say thank you all for the hard work you do. I appreciate it every day. I'm neither for or against the development. I'm just, I want to get the proper answers. Very simple question. That building's developed, it's there. A night like tonight, city council has a big agenda, a lot of things on the agenda. Parking lot's full. Where's the overflow go? Parking lot right here is not big enough for the city hall. Parking's always been an issue. I remember when the parking lot on Springfield Avenue was built behind Color Me Mine. That was supposed to solve all of our parking problems. It hasn't. So we need to answer the parking question. The traffic question for sure. I know when I used to work here in town, to come from where I live, past Marco Polo's to where I worked, it took me sometimes 10 minutes during school hours. Traffic lights, things like that. Morris Avenue's a nightmare. Traffic needs to be resolved, needs to be addressed. School, I know a lot of people have spoken about it already. If there's 140 apartments, let's just say half of the apartments have a child in it. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but let's just use layman's terms. That's 70 kids. Where do they go? Lincoln? Brayton? Are we going to have to add new teachers, new classrooms? Now I heard someone just say our school system's gone down. Everything is cyclical. I remember when Wilson was in operation. I remember when, what school did you go to?
Jefferson.
Jefferson. Okay. There was also a school road development on Park Avenue. That was an operation. Everything's cyclical. I grew up in an apartment building in the center of town. They're all now office buildings. Everything's cyclical. Will this benefit Summit? Based on Mike Rogers' report, it sounds like I want to move. Maybe we don't have enough money for our taxes. But we're a AAA bond-rated town. So how does that work? Are our bond raiders not looking to the future and saying, you guys have a problem? Or are they telling us, you guys are okay? That's something we need to answer. And hopefully with the financials that come out in the future, that's done. All those questions need to be answered before I'm convinced this is a good project. I remember several years ago, maybe 20 years ago, this council, not you guys, but the council then, voted down five-story buildings in town because they didn't want that valley effect. Those apartments that are five or six stories, they've been there. One burnt down to the ground, they rebuilt it. So keep that in mind. Summit is a nice, small town. Steve Murphy used to say the best small town in the United States. Let's keep it that way. Please think this through. Make sure it's right for Summit. That's all I ask. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm not against the development in Summit. I just think the scale of it is very large. But it feels like it's gotten, the process has gotten very far. And I'm wondering whether the process and the direction has gotten this far with the support of the council and whether you've already made up your minds that it is great in the condition that it was presented to us on Wednesday, or if you all think that there should be possibly some changes or amendments based on feedback from the citizens. I'm also wondering if you considered any local developers. There are some great New Jersey developers that could have done the project versus, you know, people who have not done projects in our area. So I'm wondering if in your minds, this is kind of already a done deal and it's the way it was presented, or if you're open to amendments.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public?
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. Thank you, everybody who's been on this project for a long time. I do have some concerns. First off, the May 2021 Zoom meeting, I had a lot of questions and concerns. And I think, I feel like I'm spinning my head here and asking all these questions and then I'm not coming up with any answers or nobody's getting back to me. And I don't know if a lot of other people in the community feel that way. You know, we're asking questions and we're wondering what's happening. And now we're at this meeting tonight, and you guys are signing this letter tonight. And there's all these other districts that we don't know what's happening next. So I asked a lot of questions in that Zoom meeting. I'm really concerned about the parking and what's happening in those following sub-districts. But I don't know because, you know, I'm raising all these concerns, and I can take a step back. I've been a lifelong resident here. I'm raising my kids here. So I've seen it. I've been here. I love Summit. I'm an active volunteer here. I spend most of my time giving back to the people here in the city. So I'm asking these questions. I have valid concerns. I'm concerned about the parking. I'm concerned about the little children that are walking. I'm concerned about the young. I'm concerned about the old. I really take care to almost everybody here. So I asked these questions. I asked, concerned about parking is a huge one. The parking lot between the Y and the library, I asked questions and concerns about. So now we're getting rid of this parking lot that I used to play basketball in when I was a young girl. And I don't know if anybody else remembers, Luigi's Pizza was there. And I used to get pizza from Luigi's, and that was like the best pizza spot. And then all of a sudden, I was a little girl, and Luigi's was gone. And the city of Summit put in this parking. And I was like, well, why is parking here? And so now parking's there. And I learned that that's an overflow for the city hall, right? So now we can park there when this is packed outside. But now we're getting rid of that parking. So now where do we go when this is an overflow? So now we're getting rid of that parking lot. And that used to be packed during, you know, non-COVID times when people would park there and go into the city. So now we have this parking issue. And I've asked questions last year about the parking. And I'm going to take another step back, that when we did this huge renovation at the high school, and, you know, we have hundreds more students that attend the high school, the planners did not take into account parking for all the extra seniors and juniors that were going to be driving. So then, all of a sudden, we have all these kids driving, and they were finding parking spots. I live on Bedford. Bedford- Bedford, Canoe Brook, Webster, the Ken Place Boulevard. You had kids like driving super early just to try to find any spot. So like, that was a big issue. If you build it, they will come. These kids cannot find parking. I don't know why parking was not taken into account when you build this major addition onto the high school. So I'm going to stress that parking is our biggest concern here in Summit. Five years ago, we did a parking study to try to find more parking. All of a sudden, that was forgotten about, I guess? I don't know. And now we're taking away all these spots. So that's a major concern of mine.
Ms. Gagnon, I'm going to ask you, your three minutes is well over, so keep an wrap-up, please.
Okay, just real quickly. The Upton building next to the Short Hills Mall is five stories. It's gigantic. It's residential. I would like people to take a look at that building and just see how massive residential five stories is and put it where we're proposing this. I'm not against building here in town. I like it. I love walking. I walk all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Come on up, Ms. Nelson.
That's my dad.
We figured that out. I was trying not to embarrass you.
No, no, I'm not embarrassed.
You wouldn't be embarrassed about him. I didn't mean to imply that.
So, yeah. My name's Lauren Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Again, thanks, everyone, for your work. I might have already like missed the vote on all of this because I'm kind of come and go. But, yeah, and I'm not super clear about the project either, so I have to do my homework on that. But I kind of find myself always questioning about when I hear about these huge projects in the downtown because I feel like it's really important to maintain some of the history of the town as well. So when I think about the firehouse, it's very sentimental for me because my father put in all these years of service there. And I know that, you know, I guess there is already, it's finalized that it's being knocked down, and there's a new one to be built. But I always find myself asking why? And I guess that is a part of this project, the whole Broad Street area. So I just thought, you know, maybe to consider why we always think about knocking all those historic buildings down? Because maybe it's not historic right now, but I guess eventually it will be. So that's just something. And then I do hear a lot of people bringing up parking. And as me, me, Ms. Zukoff mentioned, I also a proponent of environmental everything. So instead of thinking about parking, I guess it would be, is this new development going to allow for more walkability? And also, yeah, just thinking about like making Summit a more pedestrian-friendly thing? Like, when I see all the cars downtown, I'm like, what is this even about? You know? Like, we should have like walking and the bike lanes and, you know, less cars, in fact. So maybe not necessarily more parking spaces, but like, how can we make it more accessible for everybody to get around without needing a car, sort of thing? So, yeah, that was all I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Any other comments? Okay. So if there are no other comments from folks who are here, I'm going to turn it over to Madam Clerk to read us the emailed comments that we've received.
So through you, Council President.
Of course.
A total of 18 emails were received pertaining to the Broad Street West Resolution, both in support and opposition of the project. All 18 emails were forwarded to the Mayor and Council earlier today, including certain staff. The emails will be attached to the official minutes of the meeting. Once approved by council, they'll also be posted on the city website. Following are the names of the members of the public who sent in emails. And I tried to, as best as I could, summarize their comments without shortchanging anybody. So please be patient because there are quite a few points here.
Do you think it makes sense for us to address the things we've gotten so far and then do?
Totally up to you.
It might be easier because I'm worried that it's going to get to the point where it's going to be impossible to remember everything.
Okay.
So, okay. So I'm going to go back and address and call on folks to address things. So, let's see. Our first comment was from Ms. Oliver, and she wanted to understand about whether entering into an LOI, you know, what that means exactly. And so what our council member, O'Sullivan, explained is this is a letter, we think of it as a letter of transparency. It's a tool that allows us to sort of stick a pin in the things that we have already agreed to with the redevelopers. With, you know, we've been negotiating for, you know, for a number of years now, and there are a number of terms that have been settled. There are some other things that we're still working on, parking being chief among those. And I've heard a lot of people saying they're concerned about parking. We share that concern. You know, those of us sitting on the steering committee and up here on the dais, you know, we all live here, we all care very much about the community, and we all are concerned about parking and traffic. And we know that those are issues. And we are working through those issues. And, you know, there will be a solution before we sign the actual redevelopment agreement. There will be a solution that solves for those problems. So I want to reassure you, we didn't come out to you at the meeting on last Wednesday with everything tied in a neat little bow, and that was intentional because we wanted to have an interim discussion with you about where we are now. Because it's been since last May that we've been, we've come out and talked to you, and people were asking, what's happening? Where are you on this project? And, you know, we don't, if we come to you with something tied up in a neat little bow, what you're going to say is, you know, but it's too late for input now. And the answer is, yes, if everything were resolved and everything were done, then we wouldn't, there wouldn't be any ability to hear your input and to react to it. So it's kind of, I think of it as an iterative process, that we come to you and we say, here's where we are now. We get your feedback. We incorporate what we, you know, we evaluate it, we incorporate it, and then we come back to you again. And we do, you know, we're coming to you now saying, talking about subdivision three because in May, we talked about all three subdivisions, and we heard the comments about concerns about the lot between the YMCA and the library. And we heard, you know, and we realized that that was something we needed to do more work to answer those questions. So we said, let's do subdivision three because that was, it was, in some ways, the one that raised, you know, the least concerns and was the most doable in terms of the location and the least amount of disruption. So, you know, so that's why you heard about sub-districts one and two before, and you're not hearing about them now. We are hearing what you're saying, and we're responding to what you're saying and adjusting accordingly. So you can expect in the next few months that you will hear more about the finances. The finances are really the last thing that come because the details on the finances are very dependent on what you, what the final product is going to be. So, you know, we've told you what the purchase price is, but in order to give you actual numbers on the pilot, we need to know what the, you know, what every single term is going to look like. Because that's what determines what this building is going to cost to build and what the profits are going to be. So that's why we're not giving you those finance terms right now, but you will get those. We will also have our financial advisor come and speak to you about pilots generally, how the process works. And he will also be able to speak to the demographic studies that were done. So we gave you the numbers, but he'll be able to explain the whys behind those numbers. Let's see. Okay. So Mr. Bennett suggested deferring the signing of the LOI. The reason for the LOI was transparency, and the reason for signing this is so we have sort of, again, clarified what it is that we've agreed to with the redeveloper and, you know, and are able to come out to you guys and tell you about that.
Can I just say that typically, you don't have to do an LOI?
No. This is something we did as a way of being able to talk to everyone because we didn't want to wait till the very end to talk about some of these terms. Let's see. And when we have the economic advisor, we will also have information about the 30-year pilot, and we will give the calculations about taxes versus a pilot. So there will, and so the analysis will, you know, will be presented by our financial advisor. Mr. Gates commented that parking and traffic look like an oversight. It's not an oversight. Those are things that we are working on. And we will, you know, if you have questions, I urge you to send them to BSW@cityofsummit.org. Certainly on the traffic, our traffic consultant, there was a miscommunication about the meeting. So he will be able to answer questions. If you email them in, we will respond to those questions. And that goes for any questions you have, and we'll do our best to answer what we can. And we'll be creating like an FAQ, a frequently asked questions file. They'll be posted on the city's website in response to all the questions that are asked. And Mr. Gates also talked about the timing of the lights on Morris Avenue. Mr. Schreger, is that something that we can be doing?
Through you, Council President. Prior to the pandemic, the engineering division was actually pursuing a timing study of the signals along the corridor. Obviously, when the pandemic hit, that got, we hit the brakes on that, pun intended, I guess. And then we do have funding available for it, so we will be going back out for RFPs to do a study of the whole corridor. Because for the two, three-mile stretch, there is a lot of traffic signals. So identifying what needs to be done and upgrading the signals so they all communicate with each other is a goal. And then portions of that may then fall into this redevelopment, which would be a requirement. So.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schreger. So let's see. Mr. DiSocio asked about the school-aged children. I'm not sure. He suggested a 1.4 students per unit, but that's not what our demographer is telling us. That will have to be held until we have the, you know, a presentation that will include that information. And, let's see, Mr. Von Klempner talked about traffic, about with, you know, that it would be helpful to have some understanding of the context of trip generation and how many trips are acceptable and how many that hundred, that increase, how much that would be. And that will be information that will be forthcoming in that FAQ. And I think we could also ask that question about moving the entrance between Morris, from Morris to Broad. I don't know the answer to that. Let's see. As far as how this is tied to the firehouse, could I toss that one to you, Michael?
Yeah, sure. So it's really not tied to it. I stated a simple fact, that the cost of the firehouse was $60 million. And we would have, by virtue of this land sale, $8 million available. And I would highly recommend, and I will intend to recommend to the council, that that could be put into a reserve for municipal debt service. It's a line item in our revenue, on the revenue side of our budget. And it'd be sort of distributed over years to cover that debt service payment you will have on that $16 million. So it's not directly tied, but I think it will be a wise use of those sale proceeds.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And then the question, were there any sunk costs for the city? The consultants that we are hiring to help us in the negotiation process, our planners, our attorneys, all of that is reimbursed by an escrow account funded by the redevelopers. So if this were not to come to fruition and we were to walk away, we would not be, there would not be sunk costs. And there is no penalty. So, let's see. Going down further. Ms. Kramer raised some questions, parking, recycling, breakdown of units. That's all forthcoming. All issues we're working towards. The Y and the library, we're not talking about right now because, as I explained, the lot between the Y and the library is one that we are working on alternatives to address the parking issues. So we're moving forward, and the scope of this discussion is only sub-district three. To my knowledge, Evolve Fitness was a suggestion that was made but is no longer on the table. I don't know about a brew, like a brew pub, possibly, but possibly not. There is some discussion about whether possibly having more than one brewery in town makes it possible to have a pub crawl or something, and maybe it's additive, not competitive. But, you know, the message that we have given the redevelopers, and they do understand, is that this is supposed to be something that adds to the downtown, doesn't compete with the downtown. And SDI supports this project. And right now, SDI is telling us that about 93% of the properties in Summit are leased.
Downtown retail.
Downtown, sorry.
First-floor retail.
First-floor retail. 93% is leased. So we're in pretty good shape.
There are vacancies, too.
But the vacancies, some of those vacancies you see are leased, and people are getting ready to take over them. So that, you know, 93% lease rate right now is a pretty good lease rate. And, let's see. So Ms. Nelson, oh, wait, no, it's Don Nelson, okay, asked about the parking overflow. Again, parking and traffic we're addressing. And, let's see. Ms. Lowshird asked if this, if we are, if we believe that this is in, you know, that we think this is done and in the condition presented, we're ready to vote on it. The answer is no. There are questions that need to be answered. This is not a done deal. We are going out to the public to get comments, and we will be considering and incorporating those comments. It doesn't mean that we necessarily are going to, you know, to change major components of this, but we are listening and we are considering everything that you guys are telling us. We appreciate the time that you take and the thought that you're giving to this process. Did we consider local developers? Yes. We talked to...
12.
12?
12 oil, I think, was 12 developers, right?
Right. Some of them were teams, though.
True.
So I don't know. But yes, there were locals involved. And L&amp;M and Toll Brothers, L&amp;M actually is, they do develop locally. They've done things in Newark and other places in New Jersey. So they, and, you know, so, yes, in answer to that question, let's see. Ms. Nelson asked why the firehouse is being taken down, and I think the answer to that...
You got, yeah, I was going to say.
I was going to say, Tom, you got to tell me this.
Right. Well, I mean, I know it has sentimental value, but it also has limitations, and this is a...
Serious limitations.
Serious limitations, like the trucks don't fit in the firehouse bays. You know, this will allow us to give our firefighters a home that will allow them to do their job better, that will allow them to stay safer, to train. It gives us a lot of different flexibility, and it's not possible to build onto that firehouse, given the, and still operate a fire department at the same time. It just, there's, the space is too constrained. So that, and as far as walkability and pedestrian-friendly, that's exactly what this is. This is called a transit-oriented development, and that's the point of it, is to allow people to live and live downtown, to walk to the downtown and make use of all the wonderful things we have in our downtown, to walk to the train station. It really is, you know, that is the point of this, and that's one of the wonderful, appealing things about this. So thank you for pointing that out. And I think that covers all the...
May I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Just to your question, Lauren, well, I said at the groundbreaking that we are so blessed with the firefighters that we have in our town, and I'm sure firefighters throughout the country and the world. They run into buildings, and the rest of us are running out. And one of the great gifts that this community can give to our firefighters is to provide them with a facility that has the proper training, that has the proper decontamination placed when they come back from fires with their stuff is filled with chemically-ridden contaminants, they can be properly cleaned, and they can have a place to relax when they are waiting and when they're on their shifts. So in my mind, that's the gift of the Summit community, a small gift we can give to them because every single day, they give a huge gift to us. So, it's time. Over 100 years old, it's time.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk to read the rest of the 18 comments.
18 emails, yeah.
Emails, yes.
Comments are as follows. Appreciate that the project will pay for the inadequate firehouse while offering benefits such as a grocery store and making the city more livable and walkable. The development provides a vision for a healthy, vibrant future. Pleased to see a lot of green trees and native bushes. Sustainability has to be key to whatever we do in our community. 140... 140 projected housing units, including affordable housing, with a potential uptick of about 27 school age children is reasonable. Pleased that council is watching out for our taxes. The project will bring in more revenue and take pressure off residential taxpayers. Proposed rental units, of which 21 will be affordable, and seven for workforce housing is to be commended. This is a unique opportunity for Summit to have a positive tangible impact on the affordable housing crisis. We have a moral obligation to create additional affordable housing. Creating this housing with the proposed development will increase the city's tax base, thus reducing need to increase property taxes while providing affordable units, a win for all. Care has been taken to create green spaces, including a thoughtful planning proposal with native trees and shrubs, an improvement over current blacktop, which does nothing but cause runoff and warming issues. Hoping that the time has come to act on the very good Sub District Three plan. The project is in a perfect spot to add new business and green spaces. Downtown Summit is beautiful, and we can expand and enhance Broad Street while attracting more pedestrians and adding greenery and trees. It will be a win for all. As a former planning board member, Chair of the Mayor's Committee for the Development of New City Hall, Chair of the Master Plan 2000, and active community volunteer is, it is, she is strongly in support of the creation of a new neighborhood. City will benefit in terms of ratables, additional and much needed diversity in housing stock, creation of more walkable tree lined Broad Street. The building is not too big for the site. Five story buildings about, in residential and around residential and non residential settings such as Euclid, Bassett Building Complex, and other apartment buildings around the city, all built at various times in the city's 125 year history from 20s to today. The five story building will be, will provide much needed additional housing. Parking is a problem, not, not getting around the fact in, is almost, in every project over the last 50 years as a resident and planning board member. Summit enjoys the resources and amenities that our city offers, including the hospital, churches, synagogues, recreational facilities, full time fire protection, and a beautiful library, all in six square miles. We need to think more broadly about sharing space along our roadways and in our parking lots. Three important institutions will be affected by any development along Broad Street, St. Teresa's, the Y, and the library, and all must be assured accessible parking, if not abundant. On street parking can have a traffic calming effect, as well as provide additional parking. Residential streets like Ridge Road should welcome traffic from our religious and educational institutions. Developers and elected appointed officials are taking the parking problem seriously, and they applaud them for their efforts and hope fellow citizens will support the vitally important project. Attending several informational meetings years back and recalls the thought process, buffer process, and level of community engagement. This project allows Summit to achieve its affordable housing goals, a component of the project that has their support. There are abundant direct and indirect benefits to our community with this project, and the time for deliberation in committees has passed. Central action through elected and appointed officials is required to move the project forward decisively. Continual delays create their own negative form of impact. The project has been discussed since 2014, and will have years of development ahead. We want to enjoy it as a community, please do not punish the rest of us by waiting any longer. Love Summit's vibrant mix of old charming and new upscale establishments. Slowly, the towns change, and the magnitude of some changes require a lot of time, planning and resources to bring a lasting impact. This project will bring a modern area in town comprised of residential units and commercial space. Loves the idea that downtown may be lively past 9:00 PM with people living there and will be patrons of the local businesses. Trust that council administrators and consultants are proposing this plan for the city's benefit and are doing this diligently and transparently. Has been following the meetings, presentations, reading letters to the editor, and articles regarding the BSW redevelopment, and a longtime resident with public school age children who is very interested and is interested in everything happening in the community. The redevelopment area is an eyesore of a space that does not generate any tax revenue. This project is an investment in the city's future with potential to increase home values and provide tax revenue, which will decrease the tax burden. Residents of new housing will easily walk downtown and spend money at the local businesses and restaurants, helping the local economy. Looking forward to seeing this exciting positive addition to our great city. The city and council have done a great job keeping the public informed of the process and recalls voting on the style of the building and different uses for the area. The February 9th presentation was very informative and showed the public, that, what the public voted for to be included. And wants to see factoring more green spaces and solar panels. The five star, the five story building is comparable to the Y's four story structure and the senior housing's six story structure. The public was heavily involved in having a say in what they wanted to see for the future in Summit, to what they wanted Broad Street to look like, and Broad Street Project is one of the results of that input. Council includes people who not only love Summit, but are showing it through their willingness to volunteer their time to the city, but also to have the experience and skill sets in areas including negotiations, contracts, public administration, infrastructure, and more to ensure the process is done right. We trust Mayor Radis and the entire council, who have spent three years educating themselves and working with experts to negotiate the best deal for Summit. The Broad Street West project was a major issue in the last election, even though for many years it was a bipartisan effort. Let's give council the trust they have earned over the years of working on behalf of Summit's best interests and support them as they ensure the project enhances our city for years to come. On the opposition side, real estate values have increased significantly. The price and cost needs to be renegotiated to reflect current property values. While some changes do not appear to be significant enough to the building concept, the plan still retains its very urban feel with a five story building that is too high, too big, too massive, and will overwhelm the site. The proposed building is an urban large building not fitting in our suburban town. Major draw of the town is the train line, but that doesn't mean we need to have a transit oriented housing. Strongly dislikes the arbors overhead in the green alley. I'm not sure what that meant. Residents want more open areas, not massive buildings shutting out the sun. Any housing needs a parking, needs a parking space for each unit and guests. Handicapped and emergency parking areas are needed. With the two year COVID situation, people are out of the loop and will be shocked to see what is being proposed. What is the 30 year pilot? The development will urbanize Summit and destroy the character of the town. Ridiculously expensive and will be even more so with inevitable cost overruns. The project will take away current green and open space, add to pedestrian and traffic congestion, and the city does not have an additional housing problem. We have no obligation to provide housing for those who cannot find it currently. The project promises recreational amenities that are impractical, given the congestion that will ensue. Urge council to vote against the LOI and abandon this frivolous project. What is the projected market value of completed, of a completed building? 112 market rate rental units with parking within walking distance to the train in the downtown and near the YMCA across from it will make for extremely valuable units between 500,000 and a million each or more. Why is Summit only selling this valuable piece of land for $8 million? We can do better. How were developers chosen? Why is there retail in the development? Our downtown merchants are struggling, let's help them first. Why was there no citywide mailing or an email from the mayor describing these plans? Seems that there, this has been done in secret. All details must be announced before vote. The town does not know what is going on, and this is an extremely transformative, potentially financially destructive move by the city. Stressed opposition to the project from the beginning. Newbies to Summit coupled with individuals who choose to make a name for themselves are driving, are the driving force behind this insidious vision. In the 1960s, developers would not touch East Summit because it was fraught with Italians. Family members approached the city and moved four homes on the same lot across from Bryant Pond. The family members still live in three of those homes. So the family has lived in Summit since 1967 and asks how council members who have only lived here for maybe 20 years have a vision for the summit that this entire city will be spending millions on that will change the landscape of Summit forever. Is that acceptable? The firehouse, post office, and library have all had renovations within the last 20 years. The firehouse needs upgrades and expansion. How much more growth are we expecting? At a past council meeting, it was stated that Summit was at 98% growth capacity. How massive of a firehouse do we need with less than 30,000 in population? No attempt was made to purchase property on Cedar Street behind the firehouse or near the bank, which was vacant for several years and now is a rental home when there was an opportunity. Is confident that the insurance company on the corner would have relocated if the city had suggested a deal. Past and present council members wanted to change the landscape and make a name for themselves. Longtime residents of Summit do not want this, Summit does not need this. Will those council members be here in 20 or 30 years from now? Longtime residents will still be here with their permanent decisions.
There were approximately 22 questions that were submitted. I don't know if you want to read them.
Oh, boy.
Maybe the best thing to do is submit these to the, to the Broad Street West, because it's getting late. We'll submit them to Broad Street West, to the email, and we'll come out with the responses as an FAQ, because we've been going at this a very long time, and I would rather have the experts do it.
Yeah, I did not read the names into the record. Do you want me to do that?
Perhaps I'll be good idea, for and against, maybe just indicate.
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay.
Pamela Appel, Evergreen Road, in support. Christine Erdl, Harvey Drive, opposed. Gloria Ron Fornes, Mountain Avenue, support. Francie Cho, Beacon Terrace, support. Frances Burns, Glen Oaks Ave, support. Phyllis Sank, Ridge Road, support. Karen Rehoffer, Parkview Terrace, support. Kyle Van Decker, Parkview Terrace, support. Frederick Crawl, Tanglewood Drive, opposed. Jevon Nishay, Glen Side Ave, support. Robert Rui, Portland Road, opposed. Lisa Campbell, Karen Way, support. Steven Spur, submitted questions, did not provide a position. Leslie Celcedo, Morris Avenue, support. Mary Jo McCucci Difonzo, Washington Avenue, opposed. Peter Lejoy, Canoe Brook Parkway, opposed. Tracy Keegan, Sweetbryer Road, support. And Marilyn Zaka, Ashland Road, opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that was quite an exhaustive list. So these, so just so everyone knows, these letters, these emails will be attached to the minutes in their entirety, and so you'll have an opportunity to see all of them. This was just a summary, and also all of the council and the mayor have been provided the copies of these, so we are, we all have read them. So just a couple of questions that I just wanted to quickly hit on, and then we'll move on. So the, as far as the cost of the, you know, the price that we are, the purchase price of the property, that will be handled and will be discussed in the, when we talk about the financials. Our financial advisor will talk about how that was negotiated and all the various pieces of that. How were developers chosen? We went through a request for proposals process, it was a two step process. We put out proposals, we got responses, we interviewed everyone, we got about 12 responses. Some people took themselves out, some developers took themselves out of the running after the first round because they realized this wasn't really an opportunity that fit with what they wanted to do. We then went back for a second round, we refined the questions, interviewed people again, and then we selected L&amp;M and Toll Brothers because their proposal most fit with what, with what we were hoping to accomplish. And so there was a fairly lengthy process. And as part of that process, we sort of boiled down a lot of the proposals that we got, brought them out to the public, and got their, their input as to what they thought of various components before we went back and, and refined things. So it's, again, part of the iterative process. There, there was a statement that there was no attempt to purchase 7 Cedar Street. Actually, that's incorrect, we purchased, the city purchased it about two years ago, and it will be part of the redevelopment. Let's see, I think that covers, I think most of the other things were somewhat repetitive of what was discussed before. I'm going to allow any members of council or the mayor to jump in on anything else that they'd like to say before we move on, if there's anything else you guys want to add. But we appreciate the time that everyone took in making these comments.
Yeah, they're all very interesting questions, and there are certain things that, you know, it's important. We'll, we'll get these up on the, with the FAQs, the answers to those. You've given a lot of answers. I very much appreciate everyone's time and interest. And it's informing the decision making process.
Absolutely.
So that's all I can say.
Councilmember Miniger.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I wanted to use my comment to reiterate something that you, a response you gave to someone in the audience, and that is that we are absolutely taking comments into consideration on this. I'm the newest member on council, I've been on this for just over a month. So I'm jumping in in the middle. Your comments and those of everybody who's engaged in this are really taken into account. People participating in this is what makes local government really special, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Miniger, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. I want to just speak briefly as one of the members of the steering committee who's been working on this. And I know that there were a number of comments that people in the public are reengaging after the pandemic, but I just wanted to assure everyone, we are not, we are not reengaging after the pandemic. The steering committee has been working on this throughout the pandemic, meeting every month at least, if not more than once a month. And the steering committee is made up of volunteers from the community with different skills and backgrounds and experience. We have architects, we have members of the planning board, we have actually council, city staff, all kinds of people that have diverse backgrounds, and have been working on this really hard. In addition to that, we have the advice of our professionals. We have, in my opinion, the best redevelopment attorney in the entire state, Joe Marzini, who's been advising us every step of the way, who's also a Summit resident. We have our urban planner, our city planners, in topology, who are very experienced at redevelopment. And we have our financial advisor, who is also incredibly experienced. So we are getting expert advice, as well as the advice of the steering committee, which is diverse background. And we have been looking at all these issues, because we have the same concerns you do. Parking, traffic, is this the right size and scale? Is this the right design to fit in? And all of these issues, we've worked on exhaustively and looked at in detail. So we're not coming at the, we're not hearing, we're not getting you the answers not because you haven't been thinking about it and working on it and looking at it with experts, it's because we just don't have the final answer yet. We want to get input from the public and hear from you before we make those final decisions. It's not that we haven't thought about it, I think, you know, we've thought about lots of, lots of things with this project. It's just that we are waiting for that final piece of the puzzle to make the final decisions.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Does anyone else have, Councilmember Farthing?
Thank you, Council President, I'll be, I'll be brief. The, the first thing is that I, I think we should not assume that everyone has been following along and that they, they know already the reasons for this project. So even though we've talked about them already tonight, I think every time we talk about it, we need to state the three reasons again. One, we need a new firehouse desperately. Two, we have a legal obligation to build affordable housing units. And third, we have a fundamental need to bring in more tax revenue. So providing our first responders with the resources they need to do their jobs, providing safe, affordable homes, and keeping our taxes under control. We are very lucky that in Summit, these issues are not partisan. People of all political affiliations have fought for these things in Summit for years and have had the forethought and political courage to make actual progress towards those things. The letter of intent that outlines the proposed project allows the city to continue making progress toward all of those things. So where I think we should go from here is that though this LOI is non binding, it does represent a significant. does represent a significant commitment on the part of the city and the developers that were willing to continue moving forward. But it also presents an opportunity for council and for residents and for everyone to make another commitment as well. And here's what I think those other commitments should be. First, we should continue to educate everyone about this project. The most compelling argument, of course, is the financial component. We will clearly demonstrate, as Michael Rogers said before, the sale of the land and the revenue from the pilot agreement will net more tax revenue for the city than a traditional tax agreement would. The way that we communicate this must be proportional to the potential impact of the project. So, in my view, information must continue to be shared clearly, consistently, and widely. Council and mayor, I think, should provide an update after the meeting tonight to be distributed citywide in multiple formats. Finally, all of us, every person who lives in this city, must make the commitment to continued respectful civil discourse about this project, like everyone in attendance has here this evening. Because of social media, every single person in this community has the power to either severely erode faith in our government and public servants and this process, or to engage in good faith, treat each other, our friends, our neighbors, with the respect that they deserve. We can and we should have discussion, disagreement, and debate over matters with serious implications like this one. But in order to do so, we have to share a baseline understanding of what is true. Facts do not belong to any political party or ideological group. We have to defend the truth, reject conspiracy theories about this, and choose, in my view, possibility over fear. This is Summit where people understand the power of our voice and the value of our vote. It's my honor to serve you, and I believe it's my responsibility to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Hairston.
Well, I am not going to take up the council's time to be redundant, but I can say that each council member has shared my view about the deliberate and the thoughtful and community engagement of this process for making the city better. And I so appreciate the layman's term used by Councilwoman Allen and how we think about this, and I appreciate Councilman Minigers talking about how helpful it is when we hear you dissent and ask really good questions. The part that I want to add is that I feel very fortunate to live in a town that makes sure that they hire the best and the smartest people who will be able to engage with a very intelligent community and then also a very caring community who are not going to dive into the website and go over and over again, but who will take the time out to engage and contribute. It's uncomfortable not knowing all the answers, and I just want to say that there is a, this is a very complex and highly monitored by the state government, by the federal government even, has rules and regulations in here. And everyone, including the staff, is really taking this very seriously. And as I said, no, I haven't made up my mind because it keeps evolving. This is a long-term project, and I just want to echo, please stay engaged with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Anyone else? Okay, so, hearing no other comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're now on, after a long conversation, we're on to Capitol Projects number three. Councilmember O'Sullivan. Okay, maybe we'll do like a seventh inning stretch. Please take your seats. Right, so we're now on to Capitol Projects number three. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9452 to authorize the temporary and extended closure of a section of Maple Street. In an ongoing effort to assist businesses in the city's downtown and at the request of SDI, the City of Summit is authorizing a temporary closure of Maple Street from March 15th through November 30th, 2022. This large window of time gives the city the flexibility to monitor the weather as well as the health and safety of our community. The city will retain the right to reopen Maple Street to traffic with two weeks' notice to the adjacent businesses should the need arise. The last two years, we have temporarily closed Maple Street to vehicular traffic, and we have received positive feedback from the community, and SDI enthusiastically supports this initiative with outdoor music and events. At the onset of the pandemic, Summit was the first municipality in New Jersey to close a road to support the business community, and we now have a blueprint for how to do this successfully. I want to thank our various department heads for their support and effort to make this happen. I also want to thank Mayor Radist for her proactive outreach two years ago to the governor's office and the New Jersey Department of Transportation to make this a reality. And I ask that we move this resolution.
A second. Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Quick ones, Council President. There's three.
Sure.
First, businesses want this. SDI, the group that's elected to represent downtown businesses, has asked for it. Second, residents want it. This is, when campaigning, what I would consider the most wildly popular thing that I got to talk with people about. And the third is, though there are no government restrictions to dining, surely the pandemic is still affecting businesses. So, I am in support of us doing this again for these three reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I want to respond to Ms. Nelson, who has undergone lots of surgery, her husband.
Oh, Gagnon.
Gagnon.
Oh, Gagnon, I'm sorry.
He's calling herself.
I apologize. In that I can empathize with you, having had the replacement surgery, having been accustomed to being able to drive right up, and I have been very much in favor of coming up with a walkable downtown Summit. And so, the shift in my own behavior did take time because it had to wait until I was physically able, but I want to say I support this closure in it being in a responsive way, and I think that as we move back to normal operations, our businesses will be able to be responsive to all of the trucks that park in take-up spaces. There are a lot of things, and not just the closure. Closure is really helping keep the downtown attractive, and it's really competing interests trying to find the best way forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Any other comments from members of council? Go ahead.
I just want to weigh in briefly. As you know, I don't get to vote on these things unless there's a tie, so if one of you wants to walk away, I can vote. But I, I'm in favor of this, not only because I think it certainly benefits the merchants and restaurants in that area, but I've spoken to several business owners in the downtown who, when they have people that are coming into their stores, they often ask, you know, they engage, "Where are you from? What brings you to Summit?" Many of them say, "Well, we're here because it's, we're dining out, we're going to have lunch in a little bit, or we're going to have dinner in a while, or we're dining out, we're eating outside on Maple Street. We love it. We feel like we're in Paris." So, that's one of the reasons. So, they shop, and it doesn't just benefit, the reality is it does not just benefit the stores on Maple Street, and I think that's important to remember. It's a draw for the city. The New Jersey Association of, or New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association named Summit this past year, 2021, one of the great, best places in New Jersey because of its open space and its outside activity. So, I am in favor of this, and I urge council to approve it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just also to add to what the mayor just said, that even during the closure of Maple Street last year, it wasn't just the four restaurants that used this space, but Kidville and Robot Revolution, and I'm trying to think if there was anyone else.
Yoga Studio.
What?
Yoga Studio.
A yoga studio. They all use the space as well, so our businesses are very good about working together and allowing this space to be used as much as possible, which helps all of the businesses and just creates a more vibrant downtown. And, you know, we will be, the Capitol Projects Committee will be monitoring what's going on. As far as the weather, we won't be having this open too soon if the weather doesn't allow for it, but we want to pass this now so when the weather does start getting warm enough, that it will be possible to do this without having to go through the process later. So, with that, if there are no other comments on council, I'm going to turn it over to the public.
Council President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
You actually almost answered it, but I just wanted to say, I love the outdoor dining. It is a popular thing across town. I echo Councilwoman Hairston and Ms. Gagnon's sentiment. Just figure out the parking around there, maybe, I don't know, just, yes, and the timing. So, I was concerned about the, opening it too soon. So, what I'm hearing is, is we vote on it tonight, and then if it's really too cold, then we could potentially open it in April, like 15th, so it doesn't have to be open on March 15th. I was just concerned about closing a road too soon in the cold. That's it.
Correct.
So, it's getting late.
No one's going to want to eat out when it's nine degrees.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right, and if there's snow on the ground, like, you know, we're going to use some common sense here.
Okay, that's all, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Gagnon.
I'll be quick because it's late. I usually go to bed at like 9:30. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. So, I'm in the Washington District and have to take that route every single day. And when that road was closed, this is really to, little nice Erin over here is going to get my question, I had to reroute myself every morning to get to the middle school and towards the train station. So, is there a way, since this is going to be, I know you're all in favor of this, and I can't change your minds at this late hour, to get the lights changed, maybe? So, I'm not, you know, that one light right at the intersection of Springfield and Woodland, I think it is, it's pretty quick. So, maybe if this is something that's going to happen all the time, we can look at changing the lights. I don't know if that's an option, but I'm constantly, like, I can't go up Morris Avenue from Bedford because I will, you know, you're on my side of town. You understand what that's like. I think you're on my side of town, right? Are you on my?
These are all Ward 1 folks over here.
So, yeah, it just takes too long on that side, so I have to go through town and up Woodland to get to the middle school.
We're aware of that.
So, I'm not in favor of it being closed for that long of time. I don't mind the summer months, but when it's, school is open, it really, I have to leave like 15 minutes early. Yes, I would love to walk. That doesn't work. But if we could do something, maybe with the lights, so it's just not like so quick and then people are honking, and it just creates a lot of stress. So, that's one thing. Back to my parking situation and looking at the parklets, if that's an option, I really think that when that's all open and people are parking in the streets in the trucks, I know with the Summit House, trucks were parking in the middle of Springfield Avenue, and people are going around. It's really creating a stressful situation, and kids are trying to cross, and I'm just really worried that I'm going to hit somebody or someone else is going to hit somebody crossing the street. So, that's really a concern when Maple Street is closed. So, those are my biggest concerns with congestion of pedestrian safety and parking. So, if we could really look into that before this is closed and then the parklets, people start applying for all these parklets, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gagnon.
While I'm still here. Rachel Kramer, 88 Alm Street. I love the Maple closure, especially in the warmer months when you can enjoy eating outside. I like that you're going to monitor weather situations and all that jazz. I guess the question is, not so much for a partial closure, which this is from 3:15 to 11:30, but more so down the road for a permanent closure. The rush, Maple was closed December of this year, and November, I mean, November as well, but have you guys collected reservation data from the restaurants on Maple Street and on, like, The Office and Pietino? How many people were eating outside in December to help kind of like inform a more permanent closure of Maple Street? I think it's important to look at that. I know that outdoor seating is still available at The Office and Pietino. I just don't know who is eating outside on a night like tonight. So, I would recommend if you're looking at a permanent closure down the road, to take reservation data into consideration, especially for months like December and November.
Thank you for that comment. SDI has actually hired a consultant to look at the concept of a permanent closure, and they will be considering usage, best practices, ways to program space before any decisions are made. And of course, you know, this year, it's a short-term closure. It's not a permanent closure, and when we, when Broad Street West is underway, we will consider the two in tandem. They will not be considered in a vacuum.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I don't mind the outdoor dining, but I feel like a lot of the time outside of the summer months, it was actually an eyesore. There were heaters lying on the ground. There was a time even during one of the parklets where ani ramen, the snow had fallen, and it had broken their igloos, and so there was broken, you know, plastic or glass or whatever it was. I thought that was an eyesore, and clearly nobody was going to be eating outside at that time. I don't think you need to give yourself that much leeway. No one's eating outside on March 15th, nor kind of in mid-November. Why not give yourself a little bit shorter of a time? Because also, how are people, it's closed, it's open, it's closed, it's open. How do I know? I don't know. You know, I just don't think you need that much time to make those adjustments, and definitely, no one's going to be eating in this kind of weather, which, you know, it should at least be when, you know, I don't know. I just think there's a different solution. Perhaps there's a different street that isn't such a main thoroughfare.
I thank you for your comment.
That would be better.
Come on up, Mr. Baker. Good evening.
Hi, thanks, Jerome. I'm Dylan Baker. I live at 72 Dale Drive in Summit, also own Summit House and Barbacoa, and work with some of the other restaurants on the street, on Maple, to approach the council. So, thank you all very much for your support of this initiative. It's meant a lot to us. It's meant a lot to the other restaurants, and I try to separate myself from it and look at it as a residence, as a resident. I think it's just been great for town. You know, I hear it from the people at the tables. We really enjoy having it. I hear the Parisian, the French, and Italian language all the time, people saying how much they feel like they're in Europe, and just love it. I hear people wanting to keep it to a season, and it makes sense. I think it makes sense to tie it in to the same time as the farmer's market, which runs roughly mid-April to Thanksgiving, and I think that makes a lot of sense for this. I understand it doesn't exist in a vacuum, and it'll be looked at for more permanency with the Broad Street development. That seems to make sense to me as well. Just wanted to thank you again for really considering all that you've done over the last two years to get us where we are today. It really has been a great lifeline, and I think it could be a real silver lining. If it can live beyond the pandemic and start to be something that people talk about with Summit, how we have this great outdoor dining environment that lives on, I just think it'll be wonderful. It's meant to be, combined in with a more walkable downtown, and people coming into the downtown, enjoying an outdoor space where they can dine. I think that's fantastic. I am sorry for any inconvenience it gives to drivers during that time of year to get around. I get it, I have a middle schooler as well. I get it, I have a middle schooler as well. But I think that the need of the many here to enjoy the downtown, to have a walkable downtown, to sit outside and really enjoy the lifestyle outweighs some of the traffic issues going around for a few minutes. Thank you for everything again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Good evening.
Good evening. Definitely down. Hi, Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. I am definitely one of those couples, I couldn't go on my honeymoon during COVID, so we went to Paris, which was Summit House and Roots, and thoroughly enjoyed it. So I just want to start off by saying that because I think it has really made Summit a dynamic place, and it's really wonderful to see. I do also think that it's really important from a trash perspective and from like a general maintenance, there is impact from this, especially if you extend it to be even further than just the summer months. So I'm wondering if there's anything built into this extension that, you know, puts limitations on, you know, how heaters are shared outside or when they get put away, or just some logistical components? Because I do think the beautification of Summit is also what makes it special. We should, you know, be really aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? So in answer to the question about the beautification, Ms. Kelly, there is, in each of the approvals for the restaurants, there are requirements about maintenance. And our property maintenance folks do go out there, and if they find trash that's not being properly disposed of, they do go and they, they talk to the restaurant owners and get those problems solved. So, you know, we, we are aware of that. And one of the things that the consultant will be doing for SDI is looking at sort of, if there's going to be a longer-term closure, ways to do it more attractively, you know, rather than the orange barriers, you know, are there bollards or nicer things that could, that allow for emergency vehicles to still go through but are more attractive? So those things will be identified as well if it goes forward. So is there anything else that anyone on council wants to add?
Oh, I mean, we could always be better. We could always be better, right, at keeping things? I mean, there was a whole lineup of heaters on the alley heading down towards the tier garage for a little while there. And we, we're working on it.
I think council member Little had a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, as part of the cap committee, we did this for a long time, and we were, you know, we, we did this originally. And this is, it says a work in progress. We'd never done this before, and we're continuing to improve it all the time. The dates were made after a question of SDI and the restaurants involved. So those, that's why we picked those dates. And in the resolution, it does say that we are subject to weather conditions, safety conditions, health changes in, you know, in recommendations from the Health Department and the Department of Transportation. So we have some leeway here. If, you know, we'll look at the, as we get to March 15th and see if they're appropriate. We'll also look at it in November, the same way we did this year. But I did want to push back a little bit on the fact that no one uses this or that the dates aren't appropriate at all. Because I remember in the spring that there was a lot of activity as soon as we opened it. And there was, you know, there was a lot of demand for the outdoor spaces when it was open last spring. And I fully ate outside several times in November, and there were other people outside. I have, you know, health risks in my family. I'm here at home. I can't eat in, inside restaurants. I, you know, I was very grateful to have the outdoors, but there were also other patrons who were there eating outside. And also, as in New York City, a couple of weeks ago, and walking through the streets of New York City, there is outdoor dining on every street in New York City, and they're packed. Also, like, you know, in Europe, in the winter months, all the restaurants are outside, they're packed. So there is precedent for people enjoying the outdoors, eating outdoors and doing this. I think the overall response from the public has been great. It brought a lot of traffic to the downtown and a lot of people outside from Summit, come to Summit, that we have this great outdoor activity. It can, like the mayor said, it can always get better. We can refine the look and the maintenance and all the things and, you know, keep working with restaurants, you know, getting better and better and better. But it was, in my opinion, overall, a really great success story to do this. And I'm fully in support of continuing it this year.
Thank you, council member Little. Any other comments from members of council? Hearing none.
Counselor President, we did receive.
Oh, right, right, I'm sorry.
Five emails were received.
It's getting late.
Mostly opposing, one in support. The names of the individuals were Megan Terry of Montrose Avenue, opposing. Brian Felmet of Madison Avenue, opposing. Leslie Salcedo, Morris Avenue, support. And Marilyn Zaka, Ashland Road, opposing. Some of the opposition expressed was that they opposed the timeframe of March through November and would be supportive of a shorter timeframe, perhaps May to December. But nine months' closure is excessive. Permanent closure for any duration would be strongly, would be opposed, they would be opposed to, but suggested if that were the case, to limit it to weekends. Concerning that the major downtown streets could be permanently closed during a peak rush hour. There were three questions posed. Can someone please talk about how this street will be utilized during weekdays, specifically during the morning, during peak rush hours, 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., and also during evening rush hours early in the work week? Second question, do you have concern, any concerns that Maple Street will be vacant from outdoor dining the majority of the weekday hours due to this closure when it would be, otherwise be used for its original pre-pandemic purposes by vehicles? And number three, why is SDI leading this instead of the larger community via simple low-to-no-cost technology community feedback or polling for the desire of the closure? It's a great addition to the downtown, and they've enjoyed the dining experience. The closure was done at the height of COVID-19, which made sense to help restaurants. But now the COVID cases are declining, and they don't see the need for the closure. The closure results in significant hardships for people trying to drive across town. Traffic backs up due to the closure and will result in emergency vehicles having significant problems getting across town to respond to emergencies. A general poll of the citizens should be done. And the closure should not be approved.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, part of SDI's consulting, the consultant they've hired will be doing focus groups and getting feedback from members of the community. So that will be happening. As far as the other questions, I think we will probably have to defer those for now. I don't have the answers to, I can't remember even what the questions were, some of the questions were.
Well, why don't we get them, and then we can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll respond. You know, we'll get them and respond because I think it's getting late, and we'll, we'll make sure that we get responses out to the public. So with that, are there any other comments from members of council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any post? Motion carries. Okay, so we're on to Capital Projects number four. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9451 to authorize a change order number one. And final, sewer jet building concrete project for $2,500. CMS Construction has completed all the work to the city's satisfaction on the sewer jet storage garage that houses the Sewer Utilities Sewer Jet Truck. Change order number one and final, adjust the contract upward by $2,500 based on necessary changes during the project, which included fees for soil removal and a credit for an adjustment to the footing. The original contract award was $125,000, and the new contract amount is $127,500 for a 2% increase. And I ask that we move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. So we're now on to Capital Projects number five.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9314. To accept the donation of services and authorize contract execution for the Parkline, Morris Avenue Bridge Project Construction Management Services by JCMS Incorporated not to exceed $45,000. JCMS of Mercerville, New Jersey is a construction management firm, and they are willing to donate construction management services to the city of Summit for the Parkline, Parkline's Morris Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. By approving this resolution to accept this donation, JCMS will be handling many of the management tasks that would typically fall upon our engineering division for capital projects. The scope of their work will include oversight of the engineer of record, inspection, scheduling, utility coordination, and contractor payments. JCMS has extensive experience managing public projects and is qualified to provide these services for the city. You can expect construction of the bridge to begin this fall. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen.
Whenever you, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Gotham Joas, and Erin, if I got that wrong, please correct me, tonight, who is the principal with the engineering firm who has donated their services to the Parkline. He, the project valued at $45,000. He's a Summit dad and is a volunteer with his kids clearing the land for the butterfly garden and offered to help out. And just want to give a shout out to the Parklines.
That's right. Gotham's right there.
Oh, there you are. Oh, sorry. I thought everybody left. So thank you. I just want to say thank you. That's it. You're right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, comments from members of the public? Okay. All right, well, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Thank you for your help with this.
Thank you.
And moving on to Capital Projects number six.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9449. Execute a memorandum of understanding with Summit Public Art for the Promenade Fountain. The city is delighted to execute a memorandum of understanding with Summit Public Art, so the art project at the promenade can proceed. An artist has been selected by Summit Public Art, and the design and process has been accepted by the city. The memo of understanding clearly defines financial responsibilities for all parties involved, which are Summit Public Art, City of Summit, and Summit Downtown Incorporated. The memo of understanding also identifies in-kind services to be provided by the city. If we approve this resolution, major work can begin in April with anticipated completion in the summer. I move this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? So I'm very excited about this project. It's been a long time in the works. And I'd like to thank Aaron Trager and all of his staff for all the work that they've done in terms of figuring out how to make this happen. And also the Capital Projects Committee, who's been working through all of this. It's, you know, refurbishing the fountain and then installing the artwork is a, there are a lot of moving parts to this. So, so thank you. I think it's going to be a great addition to the promenade.
And the, the women and men of the Summit Public Art.
Of course.
Vivien Furman, Estelle Fournier have been sort of the driving forces behind this whole fountain rehabilitation or restoration for years. And then the current co-chairs, Marie Cohen and Debbie Schwartzman, are awesome. So I just want to give it, make sure we give a shout out to them.
Yes, thank you for that addition.
Yeah, they've worked hard.
Yes. So I think this is going to be a great addition to the fountain, oh, to the, to the promenade. And anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Just very quickly, Council President. Thank you. The, I don't always like all the art in the downtown, right? But that's the whole point, right? Like, you're walking by, and then you're talking about art, and that's mission accomplished. So nice work to everybody involved in this. And I do, seeing the concept, actually think I like this one, so.
Oh, well, I'm so happy for you.
Thank you.
Because this one's permanent, so you, good thing you like it.
Yeah, yes.
Some of the others are temporary. But anyway, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to the consent agenda. Are there, usually we take this whole, the agenda as a whole, unless anyone wants to comment on any individual parts of it. So if there is no one who wants to do that, do I have a motion to, on the consent agenda, to approve it?
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and we now, we also have an item for discussion. The capital, the Affordable Housing Status Report, which I believe we are obligated to, to reference and discuss in some way?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to take that one, council member Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9330. It's the Affordable Housing 2021 Annual Status Report. This is the Affordable Housing Report for 2021, which is released annually pertaining to the city's settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing. Matt Delory, our municipal housing liaison, has prepared the annual Affordable Housing Report that was presented to the Affordable Housing Committee at their February 7th meeting. Some of the highlights of the report are the Morris Avenue Habitat for Humanity project is moving forward. Common Council authorized $1.4 million to be drawn from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Funds were paid to Morris Habitat for Humanity for property acquisition and construction costs related to their 12-unit affordable project at 146 Morris Avenue. It will be the first modular construction project that Habitat has ever done. We also welcomed Mark Lekington as our new administrative agent. Mr. Lekington has the depth of knowledge and expertise that the city was lacking and is already making a difference in Summit's affordable housing. The city also accepted a non-residential development COA fee from Bristol Myers Squibb for $472,500. I've given you just a few highlights. The report is online, where you could, you will see an improved Affordable Housing website that is much more consumer-friendly. The city continues to make progress towards our Affordable Housing goals and obligations. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, very nicely done. Are there any comments from members of council? Is that a yes? Okay, go ahead.
Sure. So as one of the, one of the Affordable Housing liaisons, I'll just repeat a couple of things and then add another. So first, thank you to Matt Delory, and thank you to Mark Lekington. Just the basic, what would seem like basic stuff wasn't there until this last year. So we now have a website, a phone number is on the website, there's an email, there's a very simple, quick qualification or pre-qualification form that people can fill out. There's also a table so that you understand the number of people in a household and the maximum possible income you could have. Second is the Habitat project. Thank you to Administrator Michael Rogers on Morris Avenue because the entrance is now on Morris Ave. There can be in the future two more affordable units built. And Habitat and the neighbors are now happy moving forward with this new settlement agreement. And the third is, is not exactly in the report, but I think it's important to thank publicly, again, in addition to the last meeting, the Housing Authority Board for their very strong leadership in bringing in a new executive director, assistant director, a social coordinator, and a social worker, and lots of other improvements that they've embarked upon. That has not been an easy task, but they have leaned in and been, I think, extremely successful. So those are the three things I wanted to pull out. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Vartan. Does anyone else have anything they would like to add? So hearing nothing else? Oh, yes. Any comments from the public on that? All right, so I guess there's nothing else we really need to do on that, correct? Okay. So now we're moving on to council members' comments and new business. I don't know if anyone, council member Hairston, and then we'll go to council member Little.
Yes, I know I'm between us and the door, but I didn't want to just.
Yeah, it's going to be a stampede, Susan.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge those awesome students who came in.
Absolutely, they were terrific.
And thank them for putting themselves out there for Black History Month and their parents coming. And want to encourage us, if we can, to visit the high school. And also, our New Jersey Visual Arts has a, an exhibit of, similar to some of the things that they were talking about there. So lots of opportunities to take advantage. So just wanted. So just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Any other comments? Councilmember Little, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say happy birthday to Councilmember Barton tonight.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No voice.
Thank you, Beth.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. Happy birthday. I enjoyed the student's presentation tonight, and I just wanted to say to Chief Zagorski, because I didn't get to say earlier, it has been a pleasure working with you, and I have the full confidence amongst my colleagues. And it is a difficult time in our country, and there's a lot of issues going on around us. It is not exclusive to Summit, and I have full confidence that you are keeping our community safe. And it is incumbent upon all of us to work together to make this right. So I just didn't want that, the night to go by and not say it. Okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience tonight.